Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Idaho College Board of Trustees meeting for April 22nd, 2015. Tonight, we're in the beautiful city of Sandpoint. We're all very excited to be here. Before we go on to the rest of the agenda and some other items, I would like us all to rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Well, Board, isn't this fun to be in Sandpoint tonight with our faculty and admin and staff and all of the wonderful citizens of Sandpoint that came out to join our meeting? We would like to go over our mission statement since we're part of your community with our North Idaho College. We're here in the building where our students have opportunities, and so I'd ask our Board member, Ken Howard, to review our mission statement.
Thank you. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves. It's a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Very nice. Thank you. Board, I'd like to take this opportunity to ask each one of you, we'll start with this end of the table. If you'd make an introduction of yourself, tell, you know, maybe the audience a little bit about your boardsmanship.
My name is Ron Nielsen. I've been on the Board now for two and a half years. I'm a local business owner in Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls area, and I've lived in Idaho for the last 15 years.
I'm Judy Meyer, also from the Coeur d'Alene, Hayden Lake area. Been on the Board a longer time. I'm a slow learner, so it's been 14 years for me and a delight all the way along. I also am in private enterprise and real estate development, which almost always means you wear a black hat, but we try not to.
My name is Ken Howard. I'm an attorney who is trying real hard to retire. My tenure on the Board has been...
I'm Kristy Wood. I've been on the Board for 11 years. I have worked for the city of Coeur d'Alene as a police officer for, I mean, my 25th year, and it's been fun to be a part of the partnership with North Idaho College.
Good evening. I'm Joe Dunlap, President at North Idaho College.
Hello, I'm Mark Lyons. I'm the Attorney for North Idaho College, and I grew up in Sandpoint, and this was my junior high school, what that's worth.
Good evening. I'm Todd Banducci. I'm a graduate of Coeur d'Alene High, graduated the United States Air Force Academy, spent a good part of my life wearing Air Force blue and green. I've been on the Board. Ron and I were elected at the same time, since we were elected in 2012. I'm a local businessman also there in the Coeur d'Alene area. My beautiful wife, Babette, is here with me tonight, and I have a couple of sons and two beautiful daughter-in-laws and two grandchildren.
Thank you, Board. It's not often we get a chance to talk about ourselves, but we take the opportunity. All right, I feel that I can verify the quorum, and that we have no guest except the whole community of Sandpoint. I think that counts. Board, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any suggested changes to the minutes?
Make a motion.
Well, we don't need to have a motion.
Oh, good, then we're done.
Right? Then we will accept the minutes as written. We have no one signed up for a public comment tonight, but I think that we'll still have a lively meeting. So that takes us to celebrating success. NIC Community Connections, Cassie Silva's and Christine Callison. Welcome.
I know.
and community members from, I think, Sandpoint, Bonners Ferry, Priest River, and Pondure. I met this evening, so thank you so much for coming out to support our mission that we just heard about and all the good partnerships we have with our community here in NIC. And I don't know if you can see the PowerPoint. It looks a little, if I don't show the lights over there. Tonight, we're going to talk about community connections, and as I heard Madam Chair talk about our mission statement that Trustee Ken Howard read about community engagement and student success, that's what we have been focused on here in the outreach centers of Sandpoint and Bonners Ferry and, of course, Kellogg for many years. And tonight, we want to brag a little bit about all the great community connections that we have going on. Before we start, I want to take a minute to publicly thank Christine Callison. Christine was the Bonners Ferry Center Manager, and about a little over a year ago, we asked her if she would be the Regional Manager of Bonners Ferry and Sandpoint. And we recognized a regional mission to connect the communities and with the great partnerships and the good work that we wanted to do. So Christine signed up for this task, and I'm not sure sometimes if she knows what she got herself into, but we've got some wonderful things to display tonight that have been going on in our outreach centers. So I'll go ahead and let Christine start from here.
So thank you, everyone, for being here, to our Board members, to all of our community members who came to demonstrate their support. We have so much to celebrate in outreach, and I don't mind telling you, today is a good day. Mark Browning and I have been talking about doing this for a long time, and it makes me very proud to see it come to fruition, so thank you. We wanted to share a few of the good things that are happening just in the past year, just really in the past few months in Bonners Ferry and Sandpoint. And something in Bonners Ferry that we have been very excited about was the launch of a GED testing center. Many of you may know that the GED exam was changed to a new testing format fairly recently, and that eliminated all of the off-campus testing sites, which is very problematic for students who live in rural areas like Boundary County, Bonner County. Traveling to Coeur d'Alene can be very difficult for them. So we received a $10,000 Equinox Foundation grant about a year ago to allow us to reconfigure our front office and put in the infrastructure to conduct GED testing in Bonners Ferry. And we've been doing that officially since January of this year. Every testing session that we have offered has been completely full, and we're very proud to be meeting the need in our local community. So we've been serving students from Bonners Ferry, students from the Sandpoint area, students from Troy, Idaho, or, excuse me, Troy, Montana, talking about Troy, Idaho earlier today. So that's a very exciting piece of our Bonners Ferry Center. We also have adult education classes that support that. It's a big piece of what we do up in the far north country. So when we invite these students to come in and we support them with classes, we do everything we can to create local community for them. Our Molestead Library recently gifted us with a new honor library, and this was possible by the NIC Foundation. They brought in this beautiful rack of books. It's all free for checkout. It creates a lot of community and conversation, and that's been a big hit for our most Bonner and Boundary County students, and then it stretches into the Silver Valley Center as well. So those are a few pieces from our Bonners Ferry Center, and I'll let Cassie talk a little bit about what's specifically happening at Sandpoint.
Thank you, Christine. So a little over a year ago, the Sandpoint community and outline communities came together and fundraised through our foundation, and we launched and did a great ribbon cutting for our science lab. If you ever have not had the opportunity to see it, it's gorgeous. It's over there in the annex. And since then, we have been offering Biology 100 and have now offered Chemistry. We have Geology, and we're looking to come soon Environmental Science. So we're trying to make sure that we hit all the needs of the students for their lab science courses so that they can stay in the north and not have to commute to main campus to finish their associate's degrees. We've also had a request for Spanish, and we launched that as a new class as well, and we're really excited about looking at other foreign languages to be offered here as well. So coming soon, Sailing, which makes sense, being right here on the beautiful lake. We've been working with our resort management people, and they're looking to offer the Sailing classes. We've had great conversations with other divisions on campus, and so communication electives are coming. Typically, you only have speech offered here, but they're looking to increase their offerings for other avenues and other selections for students, so they're just not stuck in the same rut of the one communications classes. And art here in Sandpoint is a wonderful thing. This is a community that thrives on the arts and the musics, and so we have asked the Art Department for art courses, and art is coming, so very exciting stuff. The other exciting thing that's going on is, as some of you might know or might not know, NIC received a new TAC grant, and with that TAC grant is open up opportunities in our healthcare professions to offer more healthcare tracks up here in the north. And we have Pharmacy Technology and Medical Assistant is for fall of 2015. It's going to be an online lecture, which will be accessible to the students at home, or they can come to any of our centers to use the online labs to participate in those online environments. And then the clinical portion will be part of the community. They will only have to travel to main campus for certain lab sections, which will still be determined, but they'll be few and far between. The medical lab technician and surgical technician is going to be fall of '16, and those labs are going to be offered in our local hospitals. So we have a partnership with Bonner General Hospital up here that's going to be able to partner with us and offer that lab environment for the students, as well as one in Kellogg. Let's see. So super excited that healthcare, which we've heard loud and clear from our community up here is in need, and we're up here making headway in that to be able to offer those opportunities for students. Dear to my heart aerospace, super excited. This is an aerospace hub lately up here in the north with some great aerospace partners like Aeroset and Quest and Signus. I saw Jack here today evening, and we certainly are very thankful for those relationships. But I'd like to take a second to introduce a guest of mine, Gary Hogen. He is the General Operations Manager for Aeroset out of Priest River, and he would like to address the Board.
Thank you for allowing me to address the Board of Trustees today. It's an honor and pleasure to do so. We're excited about the partnership with NIC. It was a very short while ago when we were doing 100% of our own workforce training in-house, and we were watching a state not too far away receive $20 million for aerospace workforce training, and Idaho got zero. In just a matter of a couple of years, we went from a vision of bringing workforce training to Idaho to now employing people that have been trained through NIC, and not just trained, they're probably our most well-equipped and dedicated employees. We've been so pleased with the partnership. It was unexpectedly pleasant to partner with NIC and to find the responsiveness from academia to actually be able to sit down and say, this is exactly what we need to have NIC respond to that, and to go beyond our expectations by far. And my message to you is, I went today and I asked the production managers and spoke to the students, and I said, what, if anything, do you want me to bring to the Board of Directors, Board of Trustees as a way to improve our comments? And when I said anything to improve, there was nothing that was brought forward. So my message is, it's working, and it's fantastic, and we really appreciate the partnership. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Board, would you like to make any comments back?
Comment, Gary? If you don't know what to bring us, wine always works.
Okay. Yes, I could do that. I know a couple of local wineries.
And Gary, I know that you've worked so hard. Gary and I are friends, and I know how hard you've worked to hold this together during the good and the bad times, and we appreciate your dedication to the workforce that you have here, so thank you.
Well, thank you. It's my pleasure. Yep. Thanks.
Thank you, Gary. This summer, we are going to be offering Aerospace Technology Composite Fabrication Lab Courses at the Aeroset site, and this is helping Gary identify potential employees and train students onsite, and it's a wonderful partnership because he's got a beautiful facility that meets all our outcome needs as well as his needs with the workforce. So thank you very much for speaking tonight, Gary.
So when Cassie and I first began talking about my role as a Regional Manager between Sandpoint and Bonners Ferry, one of the things that was a personal focus for me was trying to build community connections across county lines, make it possible for students to connect the dots between all the services and programs we can offer in Bonners Ferry and in Sandpoint. And we've been making great strides with some of the activities and events that we have hosted in the past few months, and we wanted to share just a couple of those so you could get a taste of our student life up here in the far north country. So I wish the pictures were a little bit easier to see, but you can look at them later if you would like. But we started the year with, in the fall semester, we did an ASNC Day of Welcome. They do this on the main campus in Coeur d'Alene. It's a very successful and fun event. We tried to recreate that here in Sandpoint. It was a lot of fun. We served food. We gave away t-shirts, just an opportunity for students to get to know each other. In Bonners Ferry, we opted to do a midterm rally, and we had lunch, and we served food. Food is kind of the constant when it comes to students, it seems to be. But again, just successful events to try to help draw students together. We serve a very non-traditional mixed population of folks. They are people that wear a lot of different hats and come and go a lot of different directions, so it's not often that they come together as a student group, and these are some of the things we were trying to do to help build that connection among those students.
Is that a future student there?
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's a future student there, that tiny cute little one there in the t-shirt. I wish you could see it a little bit clearer. But when I think of community and I think of my role specifically, it's not just a student community, but really drawing upon our local residents, drawing them in to help them understand what we have available, how we can connect all that we do to our businesses, to our local constituents. And so a couple of the things that we've done just in the past couple of months, for instance, around the holidays, we launched this Students Shop Local Initiative. This was an attempt to get our logo out there, to get our students to visit their local businesses, get a little discount with their Student Cardinal card. We brought Cecil Cardinal to town, and we marched him around and introduced him to some future Cardinals. You can't hardly see the picture there. He stopped by and gave Santa his wish list. Very fun, just again, an opportunity to remind our local community that we are here. We are here to serve you, and just spread the message of what's here locally. Also, I mean, just continuing the year, we participated for the very first time in the Sandpoint Winter Carnival Parade of Lights. Thanks to our aerospace recruiter, Wayne Cardwell, he rigged up the trailer and the lights. I wish you could see it a little bit better. It was fabulous. Super fun event, local community event. Again, just really sending the message that we are here, we are part of this community, and we want people to know that.
About this time last year, if you happened to be driving north on Highway 95, you might have seen this lovely face on the billboard, and this is Alyssa. And to end our presentation tonight, we have our own in-house success story, and we would like to give you the opportunity to meet her.
She's our foster child for real. For a real foster child, yeah. Thank you very much for giving us your time and for coming up to Sandpoint. My name is Alyssa Pinkerton, and I am a graduate and an employee of North Idaho College at Bonners Ferry Center. I obtained my associate's degree from NIC without ever having to go to Coeur d'Alene in 2012, and then I continued on to Lewis Clark State College and received my bachelor's degree, only having to go to Coeur d'Alene for one class. And I will walk this May. So I just wanted to let you guys know that thanks to your continued and generous support of our regional outreach centers, where there was once a long and difficult road for our students, there are now pathways of possibility and promise, and thank you so much for connecting our communities to campus.
I'm so glad you clapped her. Thank you. We think she's wonderful, too. Just the last thing that we'd like to say is thank you to all our great community partners out there from Aeroset and Bonner General Hospital and the high schools and economic development and Boundary Community Hospital, Signus, who's here, Forest Bird Charter, Coachava, the Tribe, Quest, Sandpoint High School, Tamarack, and I'm sure I missed many, many more, but if it wasn't for you, we would not have the great student success and the community engagement that is part of our mission, and so we appreciate you so much. And that concludes. Any questions?
Well, Board, that was a wonderful, wonderful presentation. I'm sure you have comments and questions. Ms. Meyer?
Mine had to do with, I'm glad to hear you mention it, Miss, how are we doing as a community college at a two-year level then with connecting with the upper division post, upper division's the right term, I think, for the four-year schools? Are we able to then have folks in this area have access to four-year schools?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question. Come here, Miss Alyssa. You know, this, last year, we did a ribbon cutting here with Lewis and Clark State College, exemplifying the opportunities that students have through our outreach centers to achieve their four-year degree through them, and Alyssa just did that. We feel that since last year, we've been able to connect the dots and make sure that students do not have to leave their communities and therefore risk maybe dropping out of a class, so they can stay up here in the north to finish their associate's degree. Those opportunities are going to be opened up wider and wider to continue on to the transfer level, but I don't have that data right now. But certainly last year, opening up that science lab connected the rest of those dots that we were looking for.
I think that's my point. You may not have all the data yet, because we're getting started.
Yeah.
We, as a community college, are getting started with connecting with our sister institutions.
Thank you. Yes, we are.
Trustee Banducci.
Alyssa, I do have a question along that line. As Cassie mentioned, we initiated that partnership with LCSC up here last year, but my understanding was we're only offering like one course physically, so were you taking the bulk of them online then?
I did take the bulk of them online. However, I have to share with you that LCSC in particular accepts so many credits from North Idaho College, that I was able to take many of our 100 and 200 level classes that satisfy for their 300 and 400 level classes and go ahead and transfer those over. So the bulk of it was from Wright and Bonners Ferry and Sandpoint in person as well as online. We also have partnered with North Idaho Higher Education, the five major schools here in Idaho. They come up and they see us. We have events. We have their advisors that come to our outreach centers and are available several times during the year, and we've had a good turnout from students that have come up and attended those events. They feel supported, and they feel like they can meet with advisors and get the information they need to feel safe in transferring.
Great. Board, anything further? Well, thank you for a great presentation. We really enjoyed it. It was very, very informing.
Thank you so much.
Lord, Andy, our wonderful television crew, had asked us to use our broadcast voices tonight, so make sure you're snuggling to your microphone, speaking loud. We're in a beautiful building, and I think the heater just kicked on or something, and so we really need to project our voices. Well, now it's off.
That's pretty impressive.
Mr. Nielsen.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move Tab Number Five after Tab Number One for purposes of discussions for the operating budget regarding headcount and revenue, if that would be okay.
All right, I have a motion to move Tab Five up, which would actually be Tab Two after Tab One. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Second from Mr. Banducci. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion approved. All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to our Tab One, which even though we just listened to celebrating success, the next topic is very much about a celebration, and I'd like to bring up Dr. Lita Burns to speak to the Board about approval for tenure for Academic Year 2015-16.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, President Dunlap, Mr. Lyons, colleagues, and of course the guests here tonight, it is a great honor for me to present to you the candidates who are being recommended for tenure. If I may, just provide a little bit of background on the process of tenure at North Idaho College. These faculty, for the past three years, three and a half years, have undergone a rigorous process as probationary faculty in pursuit of tenure. The process includes forming a faculty evaluation team made up of their peers. The team is required to observe the faculty once each semester during the probationary years. In addition, the Division Chair or other designated supervisor evaluates the classroom performance of the faculty. The faculty evaluation team and the Division Chair meet each spring to discuss the tenure candidate's progress and provide constructive feedback aimed at improving instruction. Every student in every course section taught by the candidate is given the opportunity to provide an anonymous evaluation of the faculty. The evaluations are collected and collated by the Office of Instruction. A summary of the evaluations is provided to the faculty at the conclusion of each semester. The candidate is also required to provide a self-evaluation at the conclusion of each of the first three years of teaching. In the fall of the fourth year of entering the tenure tack position, all the documents from the prior years are reviewed by the faculty evaluation team and the Division Chair. The team and the Division Chair make formal recommendations for or against tenure. These recommendations and a portfolio prepared by the faculty is submitted to the tenure committee for review and recommendation. I, then, as the Vice President for Instruction, have the opportunity to review the portfolios. It is important to point out that the requirements for tenure include educational qualifications, teaching effectiveness, professional growth, ability to meet contractual responsibilities, professional ethics, and continuing performance. I must say that reading these portfolios provides me a wonderful view of who these faculty are and the knowledge, skills, and experience that they bring to North Idaho College. It has been a pleasure reading all 14 of the portfolios. After a thorough review of the files, I have recommended to President Dunlap my support of conferral of tenure for the following faculty. I know that a number of faculty have come up here this evening, and as I read your name, if you are here this evening, I would like you to stand so that you may be recognized. Gail Ballard. Gail teaches education and is in the Division of Social and Behavioral Sciences. Lucas Brown. Don't see him here this evening. Lucas teaches English in the Division of English and Humanities. Jeffrey Carr. Jeffrey is not here this evening. Jeffrey has a role in the production, a theater production that's going to be performed at NIC in the near future, and so he was required to stay there for rehearsal, so he could not be here this evening. But Jeff teaches our journalism program. Jane Edwards. Jane is a nursing faculty in the Division of Health Professions and Nursing. Jonathan Frye. Don't believe Jonathan was going to be able to make it. Jonathan is an English instructor. Paula Lambert. Paula is our Pharmacy Technology instructor, and she teaches in Health Professions and Nursing Division. Carla Mitchell. Carla is a math instructor and teaches in the Math, Computer Science, and Engineering Division. Cindy Powell. Cindy is our Medical Assistant Instructor and teaches in Health Professions and Nursing. Nancy Riplinger. Nancy is a Computer Science Instructor and teaches in the Math, Computer Science, and Engineering Division. Ted Tedman. Ted is a Business Instructor and teaches in the Business and Professional Programs. Laura Templeman. Laura is a philosophy instructor and teaches in the English and Humanities Division. Ben Tashida. Ben is not here this evening. Ben is a math instructor and teaches in Math, Computer Science, and Engineering. Randy Ware. Randy is a psychology instructor and teaches in the Science and Behavioral Sciences Division. Lisa Wilcox. Lisa is English instructor and teaches in English and Humanities. If you would all stand, please. Thank you. Along with Dr. Dunlap, we are asking the board to consider a motion to approve tenure beginning fall of 2015 for the faculty members presented here and those who cannot be present this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Board, do I have a motion?
Can't wait.
Well, look at this. Who do I pick? Well, I don't, I don't really have a favorite. Who went first? Ken, go ahead.
I'd like to move the admission to tenure of the 14 individuals who have been identified by Dr. Burns.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Trustee Nielsen. Board, any discussion?
I don't know if this is appropriate discussion, but I, being new under the board a couple of years ago, we questioned the process of tenure, the importance of tenure, and after going through a long, lengthy, emotional discussion, we came to the conclusion that tenure was healthy and very well ran at the college, and I had the opportunity last time to go through, and as a second time going through this in detail, reviewing the files, the commitments, in some cases, you just assume it's just a big rubber stamp, but where you see where recommendations were made in prior years, improvements were made, and, and specific advances by the, that Lita, I'll tell you what, as I, it was an honor to go through, spend two and a half hours reading these files and understanding that, and it's a credit to, to the quality of the staff that are here for the recommendations, so.
Thank you.
Well said. Mr. Trustee Banducci.
I'll just dovetail into Ron, because I spent quite a bit of time again this year, and I want to thank Dr. Burns for her time as, as we'd gone through the 14 candidates and reviewed them and their strengths and weaknesses and the rationale behind her endorsement of them. Things that she shared with me is, because we are, I get kind of concerned about the whole rubber stamp thing, too, is that this group originally consisted of 16 candidates, and we're down to 14, so for a couple of reasons, a couple of the candidates were not able to see the program through. It's not 100%, and there's a screening process here, and I appreciate her continuing to educate me on that, so thank you for your time.
Board, are we ready to vote? Oh, Trustee Meyer.
Just one more comment. I think the effort at credentialing and tenure reflects the commitment the college has to education, and congratulations to all of you for what you've accomplished and what's ahead for you as well.
And Board, before we take our vote, which I think I know how this is going to go, I know that a lot of wonderful faculty have traveled up to watch this. Would you stand with your colleagues as they receive this wonderful, well-earned recognition? Thank you. Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Congratulations. All right, we have moved the agenda around, and we are now moving tab five, which was our first reading of our FY16 General Fund operating budget. Are there any objections to moving forward with the budget at this time? All right.
I gotta raise one quick.
Mr. Banducci.
I've been waiting to hear if I could get a definitive answer, because it's only been brought up to my attention the last couple of days, and, and I know that Mr. Lyons is looking into it as we speak, and I'd hope to get a call back. I know some state legislators were actually involved in the discussion. Some constituents had brought to me the concern that there might be some issues with the open meeting law if we're in Bonner County discussing budget actions, tax actions, those sorts of things, when the taxing district is Cootney County. So there's a question if there's an issue if you're out of county talking about that county, the inability for the constituents from that county of the taxing district to attend and to be present, because we have a quorum and a meeting, so I just bring that to the board's attention. I've not been able to get a final determination whether that's a problem or not.
Mr. Lyon, do you, certainly, Mr. Lyon, do you have a comment?
Yes, I, I've thought about this, and I've quickly looked at the, some of the, what I think are the applicable laws. I don't believe that there's any problem with the open meeting law. It doesn't really address this issue. This is a budget discussion. There will be other budgets, budget discussions in Cootney County. I have looked quickly at Title 63, Chapter 8, which deals with levy and apportionment of taxes, including budget hearings, and there does not appear to be any location requirement. So at this point, I'm satisfied that the discussions that the board will have tonight about the budget here are appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Trustee Howard.
I just wanted to make a comment, I guess. I appreciate the, the effort to make sure that our content of our meetings are within the legal boundaries that are set by the legislature.
However, to the extent that there are objections, it would be helpful if those objections were brought to us far enough in advance that we could address them by decent research. Mr. Lyons has been on the phone, I know, trying to follow up on this claim, and it really makes it difficult for us to conduct a meeting in an orderly fashion when objections come up at the last minute and there's no opportunity to address the fundamental merits of them. So I would just encourage all of us that, to the extent that we have these objections in the future, that they're brought to the attention of the, the attorney for the board far enough in advance that there can be decent research done.
I agree, thank you. Trustee Meyer.
Well, if the criticism's levy to me, I just found out, and I was waiting, that was the state senator, Senator Onini, actually. So I was, been waiting to see if people could determine this through the AG, since it was brought up by constituents. They've been researching it, I've been very busy, I have a job and a career myself, so unfortunately, we weren't able to get, all the way up to here, my wife can tell you, I've been on the phone for the last several hours to see if anybody could get an answer, so I wasn't trying to do a gotcha moment. I was hoping it would be resolved and either be said, no issue at all, or definitively something would be cited in the statute that it was an issue. My last resort was to bring it to Mark and say, here's the concern that's been voiced. I cannot get a definitive answer, I just want to express the concern.
Okay, thank you.
It was brought to me.
Trustee Howard.
Let me assure you, my remarks were not directed to you, they were directed at the concept of these issues coming to the board at the last minute. If it was presented to you at the last minute, I can understand you're presenting it to us when you got it, but I would, I would hope that whoever brings this information to board members, it's encouraged to do it as early as possible so that it can be researched.
Not a problem, I just wanted to clarify, I was doing my best, a lot of phone calls and texts and missed, you know, so.
Thank you. Trustee Meyer, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm just thinking a lot about the issue, certainly timeliness is a factor, but also, is this any different discussion in Bonner County than it is in Ada County when the legislature discusses these things? We'll let Mr. Lyons work on that later on, but I was just, just thinking through this discussion most, since there's no action, then it seems to me this discussion goes on all the time with community members and should be. Part of what we're learning is, is how to meet the needs with shrinking resources.
All right, thank you. I feel comfortable with Mr. Lyons's assessment, and I believe that we are with good faith moving forward with our meeting. So I would like to invite Chris Martin up to the podium to talk to the board about the budget.
Madam Chair, trustees, thank you so much for this opportunity to present to you the FY16 proposed budget for North Idaho College. I really appreciate this opportunity and look forward to sharing this dialogue this evening. Just a couple of, of quick points to make as we delve into the budget this evening, as opposed to a PowerPoint. The board has received the, the budget packet, and we've had a chance to talk together through this, and I think at this point, in mindfulness of using our time to the best of our, our ability here, I'd like to hit the high points for the FY16 budget. And so within the budget packet, page one, for FY16, the college is proposing a budget of $44,277,000. This represents a 1.27% increase over the prior fiscal year. That's a $561,000 increase over the previous year. A few key points to make as we have this conversation is the environment in which the budget was developed, and so the college went through line by line with every budget director, the president sat in those meetings, myself, Sarah Garcia, our controller, and looked at three-year trends of every expense item in the budget, and I'm happy to report that this year, like the year before, the college really worked hard to decrease our, our M&amp;O expenses in every way possible, and that reduction, as you'll see going forward, the actual expenses went down dramatically, over $500,000 year over year. So the environment in which this budget was proposed includes a 10%, forecasted 10% decline in enrollment for the upcoming academic year. From a revenue perspective, that has a substantial impact to us. Forecasting enrollment decline for the next fiscal year equates to a little over $1.15 million between tuition revenue as well as the forecasted reduction we've received from out-of-district students in other Idaho counties. And so when we met with the campus as a whole to roll out this budget this year, that was the news that was shared right off the bat. The entire budget was developed with the forecast that worst-case scenario, we're looking at a 10% decline in enrollment, and so that one point, everyone knows the number, we're shaking their heads. Everyone knew we were going into this looking at an automatic decline in, in revenue of approximately $1.2 million, and so that was the conversation that started the review of expenses. The other good news I'd like to share in this is that dual credit continues to be a real bright spot for the college. So you'll see year over year, we're forecasting $200,000 of increased revenue from dual credit. So our dual credit operation is growing, it's aggressive, and it's meeting the needs of high schools and high school students all across North Idaho, and this captures that. So while we're forecasting a 10% decline in general student enrollment, we're actually forecasting a nice increase in dual credit. The other key high points I'd like to make regarding revenue is this budget includes a $295,000 increase in general state funds and a $213,000 increase in PTE funding. And if I can just speak to that in, in one moment here, this is to support advanced manufacturing and specifically aerospace, and that was a huge win for the college and really, really has helped highlight where we stand this year from a revenue perspective in helping us support CTE and advanced manufacturing throughout the college operation. The other thing that you'll see here is a $432,000 increase in new property on the rolls. I think we all like to see the construction that's occurring in our communities, and this represents our current forecast of that new property that has not been taxed in the past that is coming onto the rolls and has value this year. If I can move over to, I believe it's page three within your packet, I think this is an important point to make, and if you'll allow me, I want to just walk over to the screen to show what we said to see here. Looking at 2009, I apologize to the audience, we're going to read more, but you can't see. So in 2009, our enrollment is roughly equal to what we're forecasting our enrollment to be in 2016, and I think that's an important conversation to have as we couch this budget discussion, to say that we've all seen a dramatic increase in our enrollment over the past few years. The real positive story here is that this number is exactly where it was prior to the recession, prior to the dramatic increase in enrollment that the college received. So we're leveling out, we're back into a normal enrollment pattern, and that's what we're continuing to forecast going forward, is that we, we expect that we will grow, we are working to grow, but we believe we are entering back into a more stable and, and normal enrollment program. The other piece that I would point out that I think is valid for this conversation is, if you look at the state funding line, which is blue, in 2009 compared to 2016, that line got a lot shorter. And conversely, as you look at tuition and fees in 2009 compared to 2016, you can see that while we've had increases during the recession of the amount of funding that tuition and fees made up, we're starting to see that as a portion of our budget level back off into an area proportionate that we're heading in a, in a better direction.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Nielsen.
Is, do you want us to wait till the end, Chris, or?
Absolutely, please go forward.
So going back to that previous page, you talk about, we talk about increased state funding, increased PTE funding equaling $500,000. We talk about new property on the tax roll. This is windfall, we had nothing to do with this, they gave us because X number of millions, billion dollars were put on, we get another 400. So we add the 400 and, and, and the 500 something, we're just under $1 million, which happens to be the, the revenue from the 10% reduction, and we're estimating worst-case scenario, last year, we estimated worst-case scenario and we hit worst-case scenario. So I trust that we are concerned that this is going to be the right number. So at that point, doesn't that balance the budget if we're able to hold the budget?
At that point, it does, and so if I could move on to the expense column here and share some other information. This will be on, on page two. What this budget includes is a salary and compensation package that is included in, in the proposal, and so that leads to the conversation as far as this budget was presented and proposed as balanced. It does include a tuition and fee increase along with those other increased revenues that you saw that is included in this. So when you look at the fact that I also shared that we cut $600,000 out of general expenses, when you look at the expense budget here, you'll see that we're proposing an expense budget equal to that of our revenue of $44 million and an increase in expenses of approximately $556,000. This is proposed with the salary increase included, so pulling that out, obviously that has a, a much different picture. So that has a approximately $1.2 million price tag for total package for the salaries.
And, and the funding for that comes from, a large portion of that comes from increasing
A portion of that comes for tuition and fees, a portion of that comes from the tax increase, absolutely, the new taxes on the rolls. So moving forward to the tuition rates as they're proposed, we're proposing a $5 per credit increase in tuition for in-district students. So looking at this from the perspective of a student who's taking 12 credit hours, that equates to 3.97, 4% increase for those students. That follows through with the increase to out-of-district and all others, a 5% increase in, excuse me, a $5 per credit hour increase in tuition. Out-of-district, Washington, WU, out-of-state and international will actually receive an additional $3 increase for a total of $8 per credit increase, and you'll see that reflected as 4% increase for out-of-district students and then roughly 4% for Washington and 3.23% for WU residents.
Quick, quick question, Chris. You said it was a $5?
Yes, correct.
Because I don't see that set on here, does it?
It's not set on there, it's the, um, right here, $25 for a five, five-credit student would receive a $25 increase, which equates to a $5 per credit increase.
I'm sure we have that, thank you. Oh, Ken.
Yes. When we look at the different categories for the WU residents and out-of-state and international students, maybe for bulk of us, you may not understand there are, as I understand, agreements that influence what we can charge in those different categories. Would you just briefly discuss that?
Absolutely. So the WU category is the Western undergraduate exchange, and we're part of a, a large, our state is, is part of a large agreement where students all over the West can take classes in Western states for negotiated in Western states for negotiated rates. And that is an agreement that allows us to charge no more than 150% than we would charge an in-state student. The Washington rate is looked at each year, just in highlighting how we feel like we are working with Washington to remain competitive. There's not an agreement currently in place with Washington. The college has chosen, because Washington has chosen to offer a rate to Idaho students, the college has chosen to offer a rate specific to Washington students that's more competitive than the actual WU rate. The percentage increase that you see here reflects the fact that the base amounts for out-of-district, Washington, WU, and out-of-state residents is obviously much higher as a base percentage than that we charge to in-district students. I'd like to move on for one minute here. Looking at our comparator, the college in modeling tuition is always very mindful of where we fall within our competitors, as well as with our peers. And so, I think this is an important note to make as we discuss tuition, and that is how we fall against our competitors and our peers. And then, also looking at our five-year average. So, CSI, College of Southern Idaho in Twin Falls, has already announced they're planning a 5% increase this year. On a five-year average, their tuition has increased 2%. The College of Western Idaho, we also anticipate is going to increase their tuition 5%. They've managed to maintain a 1% increase over five years. Our direct competitor is the Spokane community colleges, both Spokane and Spokane Falls. While at this moment in time, we're not aware they're announcing an increase for this upcoming year, you'll see the five-year average of their increase is 8.5%. LCSC and all of the other four-year institutions have announced a 3.5% increase for this upcoming academic year. North Idaho College has a five-year increase of 2.7 on average. So, we feel like we have looked at our competitors and our peers, and we want to make sure that we are always mindful of the impact that we have on students and that we are maintaining quality, but also maintaining our competitiveness. Included in the packet is also a reflection of tuition and fees, including the proposed $3 impact of increasing the student service bond debt fee to cover the Student Rec Center. And I'm happy to walk through that if that's the desire of the board, Madam Chair.
Board, would you like him to walk through this? I'm hearing none, so move forward with your next.
Overall, at this moment, I think the, I would be happy to stand for questions. The primary piece I'd like to share again is that the college is able to model tuition knowing that we have other things at play, including a Student Rec Center fee this year and possibly a Student Rec Center fee next year. So, we want to be mindful of that as we model tuition. I had the opportunity to meet with Vice President Stanley, he's had the opportunity to meet with the student body representatives, as well as have I, to meet with Asnik and just share this and talk about the overall budget. And at this time, I think the students overall were understanding of the tuition increase, and I won't speak on behalf of the students, but it was a very good dialogue with a lot of understanding of why the college is increasing tuition and fees and the impact that a salary package has on tuition and fee setting.
Board, any questions for Dr. Chris Martin? Mr. Nielsen.
Chris, we basically only have three revenue sources. One is from the state, the government. Number two is through tuition and fees, and number three is from our local taxpayers. That we've been to the well for tuition and fees, and we've raised this over the last seven years by over 10%. And more importantly is that as we look at this, we look at what our tax, local taxpayers have been burdened with, and I brought a chart helped by your office of gathering the data, and I'd like to discuss that with you. But before we get to that, explain to me why in 2012, we had 4,114 academic full-time equivalent students and we're down to 2,946, which is a reduction of roughly 29%. But yet, our salary, our staffing is not going down any on that. Can you explain that?
I can attempt to explain that. I would push back that our staffing is changing. From 2009, if I can pull this graph back up, I think it's important that we note that the staffing has had changes. That's an important thing to note here, let me find the right chart. So, highlighted here is an example of FTEs, which is the blue line that goes, and you can see the changes in academic FTEs. And you can also see the change in staff and admin headcount as the orange line, faculty full-time is the gray line, and faculty part-time is the yellow line. Just to highlight, in 2009, we had 238 faculty and staff. In FY15, we have 252 full-time faculty, we had 159. In FY09, we have 163 in FY15. And then, faculty part-time, 91. And then FY15, we've got 129 equivalents budgeted for faculty part-time. So, there's a couple of key things I want to note here, is that FY15 is our current fiscal year. This includes all positions, some of which are open. It also includes budgeted part-time faculty, and adjuncts may not actually be filling these roles, but that's what was currently projected for this fiscal year within the budget. Our headcount is not directly correlated with our academic headcount. So, meaning that as we've had changes in enrollment, there has been change in staff and admin specifically, but there's not a direct correlation with faculty on our enrollment. And the reason for that goes in many ways, but one being that we have to teach the class for students to graduate. We've made a commitment to those students, and while there may have been a 30% decline in enrollment, there are still students in that class. And so, we're still providing that service to those students. And in some cases, that 30% may not equal more than five or six students in a class.
Follow-up? Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Mr. Nielsen.
So, we go to 2012, where we had 4,114, and I understand that this is a combination of your academic and your CTE. So, let's just stay with the academic side. We had 4,414 students, we had FTE equivalent for full-time student to faculty, we had 36 students per faculty. You gave me the chart, so this is the chart. And then, you go to 15, which is four years later, that we've reduced that from 4,114 down to 2,946. And our students per faculty went from 36 down to 26, which is a reduction of the same percentage of headcount. It's just that now we have, according to this, that we've reduced the students, but we haven't reduced the faculty. You telling me that's not a direct relationship between faculty and students?
There is a relationship, but I don't believe it's always a direct relationship.
Well, how do you explain the numbers that you gave me here, which is 36 in average classroom in 2012 to 26 today? That's a 36, 29%.
Absolutely, and we're looking at all students divided by all faculty.
This is just academic here.
Yes, so all academic classes divided by all academic faculty. That's correct. And I will give you, there's a correlation there. But when you dive down to the next level and you look at each particular department, and some of the things that are required for those departments, some of these have not seen that level of decline in their courses. So, this is taking the whole pot, looking at it from the 30,000-foot level. As we go through and we look at the next level and the next level, which we're in a process of doing right now over the next year, to see how we can improve and how it can be more efficient, that's ongoing right now. But when you look at the whole, absolutely, from a whole perspective, we have fewer students being served by our faculty.
Trustee Howard.
I'm not sure if I understand the questions that were asked, but I want to get my own impression of what you're saying here. The idea that there should be a direct relationship between the number of faculty and the number of students, a mathematical relationship, it seems to me that has difficult time working in an academic setting when you have classes of different size being taught by different people. Class sizes vary between individual instructors and the number of students. You have curriculums where certain courses have to be met in order to offer the students the kinds of courses they need in order to finish their coursework for their degree, and a lot of other variables that are really academically based that drive how many instructors you need for the, and how many classes you need, as opposed to a mathematical relationship. Do I have that right?
You do, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Let me respond to that. Ken, that's a great story that we can't do that, but let's just take 2010, 2011, 2012, a window of three years when we had some growth. We maintained classroom relationship between faculty and full-time equivalent student at 33, 35, 36. So, let's just call it 35 on an average, and now we're down to the last two years, 28, 26. For you to say that that is not relevant and you can't do all that, we were able to increase our faculty, full-time faculty from 597 to 750 to 760 in the growth years. We did it perfect, we did a good job of adjusting there, but when it goes down the other way, we don't have to do it. So, I believe that you don't, that there is a direct correlation, and I think that what we're saying is that we don't want to deal with reducing the headcount on the faculty to be able to adjust our budget, to be able to not have to raise the taxes to our taxpayers and the tuition to our students. So, I think you're wrong.
Trustee Bandici.
Chris, we had gotten some information, a packet, when we had our preliminary meetings on the budget. And I've got that with me, and I'd gone through it. And for the most part, it looks like the slides are identical.
Correct.
So, I'm pretty comfortable with that. But the slide you had up there just a few moments ago differs greatly, actually, from what you gave us initially to what I have in my packet right now. I'm missing one of the columns at the bottom, which you had titled faculty part-time headcount, which was kind of interesting to see how that has grown and how we're using more part-time. And then, obviously, the line above it, you have the FTE, and that is in both. But the numbers themselves differ substantially. Did we go back and correct this slide?
We took the headcount out, that is correct. After several meetings with trustees, that became, the headcount number is not a valid number, because the number of adjuncts that we have, the full-time equivalent is really the standard.
Right, yeah, I don't know what that tells us, they could be teaching one class or three classes.
Right, absolutely. So, you're one headcount. I'm not aware that the numbers changed dramatically.
Well, let me give you a couple of examples, if I may. I'm not trying to be difficult here, but under staff and admin, as I come across to FY14 on the top line, and what's in my book right here, it says 255. On the one that I'm looking at right here that I had before, for FY14, it says 209. And then, the one next to it, if I was to extend it to FY15, and what I have here, it's 252, and what I had previously, it's 208.
So, it did change.
There's some significant changes, yeah.
And so, let me go back and determine what changed there when we removed the headcount line.
Okay, I mean, again, not to, I'm not trying to poke at you, but it changes in each of the columns.
Appreciate you noting that.
To the rows as I go across.
And we will go back and determine what changed there. We did remove the headcount line at the request of the trustees that had meetings after yours, just because it became, it was not valid to the conversation.
Okay. Now, the FTE line at the very bottom, the credit enrollment FTE line, does look like it's consistent. On the one that we had here, it went from '06 to '16, and what you have in the book is '05 to '15, so I can't compare those two columns. But otherwise, the bottom line, as far as I can tell, looks consistent, just for whatever, as a reference. But it's the...
So, when we printed, we may have...
The three lines above it for the staff, admin, and faculty.
So, I apologize, and I will get back to you with the changes that occurred and drove that. There should not have been substantial changes there, just the headcount line was removed.
Well, again, when I look at 14, the difference is 209 to 215. As a percentage and as an absolute number, that's a fairly significant difference.
That's a big difference, so noted, and please allow me to apologize and correct that.
No, that's okay, I just want to know what's correct and how we derived the new numbers, you know, so...
Based on the other ones.
Yeah, maybe you can elaborate on that further later. But just, it caught my attention as I was looking at these.
If I could respond back to Trustee Nielsen.
Please do.
When you talk about the headcount, I would also point out, the other thing that's interesting about this is, on that metric, we served 3,705 academic FTEs with 112 faculty headcount, and now we're serving 2,946 with 114. The point I'm trying to make here is we didn't also have huge increases of faculty during some of our higher times here. We just need to be mindful of the fact that as we try to deliver quality education and deliver an experience that's really, I think, for our faculty here, outstanding, we need to be mindful of the fact that when we had some of those growth times, we also did not dramatically increase staff in all areas and faculty in all of our areas. So, as a quality measure, I just think that's something that we also need to be mindful of. When we had those growth, we didn't just hire tons of people either. So, there's two sides of this story, I just don't want to lose that other side of this.
Trustee Howard.
I guess I want to go back to this concept of how we, how would we determine a direct relationship, a mathematical relationship between the number of students and the number of faculty. I think it's almost an impossible task unless you're able to build into it a consideration for the kinds of courses and the curriculum and the things that we talked about before. I recall when I first came on this board and the enrollment was increasing at a double-digit rate, hearing from the administration and from the instructors how they were crowding more and more students into the classes, having a difficult time being able to serve them. We did not have the budget at that time in order to increase the number of instructors. We did it with adjuncts and that sort of thing, so we were trying to make do during a period of time of rapid growth. But as I look at this chart, I don't know that there's ever going to be a time when you can create some kind of a mathematical relationship that answers all the questions that we have to entrust to the administration about what courses need to be offered, what curriculums need to be satisfied, what do students want to have in order to be able to fulfill their educational goals and that sort of thing. And that I trust the administration, quite frankly, to do an analysis based upon more than just a mathematical relationship.
Trustee Nielsen was up, and then it'll come to you.
So, Chris, let me just ask you, forget about all this mathematical calculation. Do you believe, over the last four years, in reduction of our student, full-time equivalent student by 29%, that we should not have some reduction in the headcount at the faculty?
I believe that we should be looking at that closely and making sure that we're not making cuts now that will impact students and harm the academic integrity and quality that we produce. And that's what's happening this year, is we're going through institutional optimization, which the board has been briefed on, to look at every program, to make sure that we are meeting those needs with the faculty that we have, or we're looking at how we need to become more efficient and make those changes that might need to occur. But we don't want to do it with a chainsaw, if you will. If there's any changes that occur, they need to be done on a scaffold to make sure, to Trustee Howard's point, that quality is factored into everything that we do, because it can't just be mathematical from the top. There may be programs that we need to look at, and we're doing that now. We totally note that. But as a whole, on the general, overall number, to say that we have to do that from a general 30,000-foot view, I don't believe we need to do that. We need to look at it more closely than that.
Dr. Dunlap.
Thank you. Part of the story that doesn't get told here that I think is very relevant, and Chris, I'm going to use the slide that we looked at initially, not the one that you, that's in the board book, in recognizing there needs to be some reconciliation there. But if I go back to this chart, approximately 35% of our faculty are adjunct. And in 2012, when our enrollment peaked, we had 150 full-time equivalent adjunct faculty. We are projecting 107 full-time equivalent faculty in our adjunct for 2016. That's pretty close to a 30% reduction in faculty. And community colleges are lauded for their flexibility and their ability to increase And community colleges are lauded for their flexibility and their ability to increase and decrease based on what's happening in the economy. And so while we have a, a core of full-time employees, we also have a very flexible group of adjunct that we utilize to increase during those peak times and then decrease when enrollment is declining. And so that's a piece that often gets overlooked in this discussion.
Thank you. Trustee Banducci.
You know, I, I don't want to appear like I'm being adversarial here, President Dunlap. I don't mean to, but I just don't think you can use that analysis here. That analogy doesn't work because the numbers are so skewed here. Either it's 150 to 96, or it's 150 to 129. And to me, that, from 12, 13, 14 to 15, it's 11. So we have to get clarity on which numbers are accurate. Because if I pick between the two of these, depending on which position I'm taking, I could find a set of numbers that's more favorable because they differ substantially. So that's the first thing. Now whether there's a direct proportional relationship, some percentage, you know, some mathematical formula or calculation as to how we get there, there probably isn't. But I'm not going to debate that point. What I'm still looking at is if these are the correct numbers, now I'm cherry picking, but if these are the correct numbers, then I'm looking at a peak in FY10 of 260, and I'm still at 252 in FY15, and I have suffered a 30% reduction in enrollment. So I think trustee Nielsen's point is valid. Now whatever that relationship might be, he's concerned and looking at that going, we were at 248 and 11, so I'm four over according to these numbers, if they're accurate, with an 11, you know, and in fact, in FY11, the part-time FTE was only 127. I'm at 129 in FY15. I'm actually two higher than I was four years ago, if these numbers are accurate. So I've actually increased from FY11 to FY15 on my faculty part-time FTE, and I'm only, and I'm up four, or excuse me, five on my staff and admin, and I'm down two on faculty from 12 to 15. So I mean, if you look at the numbers, if these are accurate, and again, I don't want to cherry pick because I don't, I don't know what my reality is here. So the bigger question is, what's a reasonable adjustment without taking a chainsaw to it? You know, is it a scalpel? But it doesn't seem that there's been much movement there. And, and we're hearing proposals for a two-step increase, which is a 4% increase in salary, which is rather substantial, as you indicated, 1.2 million amongst the whole budget, which is why we moved this up, because I, I'm going to address about five other things when we get there, but I feel premature for that. I want you to finish. But I think that's the point. I do have to, I have to, I guess, back trustee Nielsen in, in the point he's trying to make. You know, I want to support him that I think his concern is valid, the specific mathematics of it, and whether there's a magic formula, you know, notwithstanding. But, and the numbers. And so it's going to be very important, Chris, that we find out what our actual numbers are.
Completely agree. Because when we removed that line, it had an impact, and I'll research that and get that correct.
Well, and again, one's missing, but yeah, the differences in these are pretty significant.
Had an impact there.
So...
Hard to see where we're headed here on this.
I don't think it's a matter of backing one trustee or another trustee. This is a process.
No, just supporting his, his point.
And, and his point is well-taken by all of us, but this is going to be a process. And there's going to be disagreements along the way. Fortunately, we're going to have a budget workshop in the near future, May 8th, I believe. Just, just a couple of points. The, the step increases that you alluded to, the big story on that, of course, is those were removed. Those are step increases that were removed two years ago from the matrix. And so that is something that I have been completely opposed to and been very vocal about the last couple of years. And so if we're going to talk about that, we have to tell the whole story. And then the correlation in classroom size, it's tough to come to that mathematical conclusion. I do think that we can find ways to reduce the budget. But you probably got to look at programs and not a reduction in class sizes, because if you have two students left in an English class, you still have to provide that English class. So you're not going to be able to really effectively manage that. If you can combine some, I'm certain that that's what administration will be looking at, then, then that's terrific. But I don't see a direct correlation myself. I do see that we do have a responsibility, look at what programs we can afford. And if we have programs that are under-enrolled, then it's absolutely our job to examine those because if they're not affordable, we can't offer them.
Which trustee would, hadn't we heard in the past that for an academic transfer class, the magic number was 12 for a viable course? And I don't know if we know what that number is for a CTE course, and that may depend on which CTE, excuse me, CTE course it is, because I suspect some are more expensive than others to conduct, just by the nature of them.
Some of them, you wouldn't want 12 students in necessarily either in a CTE course.
Correct. That might be the total enrollment.
Yeah.
Trustee Meyer, you had a comment?
I'm just thinking about what we're discussing here. It sounds like what we're working with and what you're working with do have some different numbers. We have a budget workshop coming up.
May 8th?
May 8th, where we'll begin to look at this again. It would help me then, ahead of that workshop, to have the very best numbers that we all have at the same time.
Absolutely.
With you, which I know you want to have happen, because I have some concerns too. But I don't know what my concerns are until I know what my numbers are. So on, and this chart, at least for the tenure history one, I think that's the one we're working off of now where we had some different numbers.
Correct.
And maybe, at least our chart doesn't have 15 on it. Are you, does your chart have a 16 column for a year, 16?
It does not.
16 was on the one they gave us at the little mini-meetings.
But let's pull them together then into one that we work off of at our next...
Absolutely.
...chart, please.
Definitely will do.
Okay, on that one. Then the other one I'd like to talk about is revenue and enrollment history. Maybe we can put that back up on the screen. Here it would help me to, in addition to having the percentages you show on the screen, because in the chart at the bottom with the numbers in it is the real one for me. So if we could, and the next version of this, which I assume we'll get to look at again, if you could put in not just the percentages, but the actual number of dollars. Because in looking at the bottom of the chart, across the bottom, where we talked about state funding and PTE, CTE funding, those numbers essentially from, I chose '08 before we went into the bubble, till now when we come back out of the bubble, about 15, 16. If you look at the '08 numbers and the '16 numbers, they're pretty close. Flat-ish would, would be reasonable. When you look at property taxes and tuition fees, '08 to '16, there's a really big increase. In my calculations on that, just from eight to 16 columns, was something like a 60-plus percent increase in those property taxes. In '08, it was 858, excuse me, in '16, 144. I'm just naming the numbers. Tuition and fees, same thing. It's a really big increase. And so I'd like, want to be sure we talk about that in our next budget workshop as to, that increase in number doesn't match the increase in enrollment. That's okay. Tell me how we bring those together.
We got there.
And I think that's what I'm hearing from some of our board members as well.
Trustee Nielsen.
Well, Chris, I, if, if you have some numbers that, that, that justify what we're proposing doing, which is number one is we're going to raise tuition back-to-back-to-back years for our students. If you have the justification for that, we need to know that. We were elected by the taxpayers to, to, to oversee the, the funding and, and the finances for this college. So that's our, our job and our responsibility. When we go from, you show on that chart, we went from $7 million burden to our local taxes to where we're pushing $15 million. That's not 60% in that window. That is over 100% in there. And when you look at the state funding, it's flat, and that, where we always go back to is, well, the stupid state won't give us money. Well, our taxpayers are saying enough is enough. You've doubled our taxes in the last 10 years. We can't do this anymore. So we put it on the, the burden of the student. We put it on the burden of the local taxpayers. We take the, the increase that goes with that, and then we turn around and we say, that's just the way it is. In a, in an upswing economy and growth, we're able to, to, to maintain our taxes. But in a downturn where we don't make any significant budget cuts or head count cuts, and when you're in an educational institution, correct me if I'm wrong, is it, what is, what's a percentage of salary from faculty to administration? Is that 90% of the budget? You know what the number is?
The salary is over 50%. That's correct.
No, and, and administration. So head count.
Head count? That is it.
Yeah, so, so it's basically 95% of that. And so we look at it, we say, we keep raising because we have head count, we have this, but now we have a four-year reduction, and we don't see no correlation to that. I don't know how anybody can go to somebody outside the academic world and justify saying that with a straight face. I don't know how you do that. Because there is a correlation between if we grow by 30%, we add 30%. We do that very well. When it's down by 30%, we're not going to reduce head count and try to make an effort that it isn't all on the back of there. I don't know how to do that. I don't know how that you could explain that to anybody in Cootney County that is carrying the burden of this by saying that we don't, we don't think it's a direct correlation. It has nothing really to do with that. And I, I don't think you can do that. So I, if you have a magic script that you can say that would help get that across, I'd really like to hear it. Because I think at this point, most people that are on, that are outside the academic arena says there's got to be a correlation between growth and addition of head count and a reduction in students. So a reduction in head count, and then for you to say, well, there's really no direct correlation there, they're going to say, oh, yes, there is.
So my response would be, we didn't increase our head count 30% when we had the 30% increase. And if there's a direct correlation, we should have hired a lot of full-time faculty when we had our boom. And that is not what occurred on this campus.
But your classroom sizes went from 36, 35, 36, down to 26. So...
Trustee Nielsen, that is because the faculty at that time stepped up and took on additional student loads.
What, Mr. Dunlap, you gave me the number. What's the average teacher to classroom head count for Spokane Community College?
Well, it depends on PTE versus academic programs. The, at Spokane Community College, it was 26. At Spokane Falls Community College, it was much higher. It was about 33 students. And the difference is the mix of the institutions. SCC is 70% career and technical, whereas Spokane Falls is 70% academic. And so there, there's a, a difference there.
Trustee Banducci.
Actually, I have a simple question. Chris, how much more of this are you going through? We got more or were you kind of done?
I'm, I'm just answering questions at this moment, sir.
Okay. Then, appropriate. One of my concerns is we had a bit of a windfall because of new construction of almost half a million. And we, sometimes we don't know how to handle prosperity. And sometimes I'm not sure, we, we don't want to spend whenever we can. And that's a concern because we have some other things out on the horizon, and we keep putting more things on the students' backs. We're talking about some other fees. We're going to hit another one later with the REC Center. We've got a $5, another $3. And that's why I think Mr. Nielsen wanted to talk about the budget in the context of everything we're doing. So on that note though, one of my concerns is here we have a thing called a joint-use facility coming up. We've leveraged our next two years of our increment financing that we're getting for the new CTE facility. So we've been that to get to the 15 million, which obviously we're still 5.1 short apparently. So we have no reserve at this point. And so we have the opportunity potentially to have a little reserve here, but yet it appears to me we're going to spend everything out again, and we're going to, I just, I challenge the wisdom of that. It's like, we get a little bit of chance here to put some money in bank a little for some future projects, and otherwise we fall back to, well, we'll just raise taxes, which I think some people are considering, or we're going to continue to add tuition. Wow, five, another five, another three. Well, then maybe it's another 37, maybe it's another 87 per semester per student because of the REC Center. What's the breaking point between the students and their parents that are trying to fund this? I, I, I'm not looking for a specific answer. I'm, that, that's a concern. I, I look at this, and at what point do we shoot ourselves in the foot where we can't keep going back to the well?
So trustee Nielsen, if I...
Yes, certainly.
If I may, would just respond in, in brief to that. Our balance sheet is incredibly healthy and has two reserves currently. We have general fund reserve and we have capital reserve. We have leveraged the capital reserve to create the CTE facility. I think that was a, a wise and prudent use of those funds.
Yes, sir. That's what was earmarked for.
My other concern with, with joint use is that we do have other things on the horizon. However, we also have other, if you will, imbalance on our balance sheet that is, that is currently sitting. And as the audit presented this year, it, it is probably beyond the size that is typical for a community college of our size.
And I'm aware of that.
So we're wanting to make sure that when we have things coming up down the pipe, that we've got a plan for those. And so it's a joint use. I would say we do know on the balance sheet where those funds could be, could be accessed to use and support. The next thing I would just add regarding tuition and fees...
Do we know what sort of number that looks like at this point? Or we're so premature in that process?
In the middle of the year, I don't have a good number for you, but it's, it's in the ballpark of $4 million.
Okay. In addition to what we're getting from the permanent building fund, in addition to what our partners, LCSC, UofI, KUH...
The $4 million is what we have on our balance sheet that could be used in the event of an emergency or for other projects in the future as obligations come up. It's, it's not encumbered. It's not spoken for. In regards to tuition and fees, I would just say that we are very mindful of the impact that we have on students and also on our competitiveness with our peer institutions. And as we look at our peer institutions, I, I would argue that the college is in a really good place currently, and that we are making sure that we are not an outlier with our peers and our competitors. And so tuition and fee increases go for many things. Increased student services, improved access to tutoring, all those things are part of that conversation. The retention efforts that we have, that's in the budget this year to increase and improve retention. That's there. And so each of these tuition increases doesn't just go to support salaries or, or a building. It actually also supports enhanced student services. And to maintain our competitiveness with our other colleges out there, we want to make sure that we're also providing outstanding student services, access to tutoring, access to disability services, and all those things that everyone else is also offering. In a competitive market environment, we've got to be doing as much or better than our competitors.
And I do appreciate that, because one of the questions I recently had, because I was surprised to realize that the community colleges were not under the same rules as the four-year institutions regarding, I have a son, it's a fifth-year senior right now, and he has to have health insurance. Proof of it, or they enroll him in their program by default. UofI has that, Boise State has that, Idaho State, LCSC. But the community colleges are not subject to that. Used to be able to buy a short-term plan for students through the school, but that's been done away with, I think, for the last couple, three years. So a student's kind of on their own, and I see, however, $11 per semester on their first credit goes towards our student health facility. What do we call that? The student health services. So the students on the first credit hour that they enroll for every semester, they pay $11 towards that, so that we can assist them with a minor injury or minor health need or something like that. So that's one of those services. So I do appreciate that. Students are self-funding that. It's just another $22 per year if they need a Band-Aid.
Or a flu shot.
Or a flu shot.
Or all sorts of things.
I understand. And again, I've been experienced with three, several colleges through my sons. Some had full clinics, some had a nurse, some had trainers, one of my sons was an athlete. Some, you've got to go downtown to the hospital because this college is a small, private Christian school, and there's not a lot of facilities there. So I, I appreciate that we do have something, and we have a lot of nurses or nurses in training on the campus, but that's a whole nother thing we're readjusting because we just lost the person in charge of that, and we're working through that, I guess.
Trustee Howard.
As we go through this analysis of the revenue, excuse me, I'm struck by the fact that back in 2006, the state contributed 34% of our overall funding. The property taxes were 24%, and the tuition and fees were 30%. What has driven the increase in property taxes and tuition and fees has been the fact that the state has reduced its contribution from 34% in 2006 to less than to 25% in 2016. And there's only two other places that we can get that money, and that's tuition and fees or property taxes. As I recall, for the last two years, we have not taken any property tax increase. For the last two years, we have not given the, the faculty raises. For the last two years, we have not given the faculty raises. And what we've tried to do is to keep the budget balanced. Over the last two years, the administration has found savings in the budget so that we didn't have to raise taxes, property taxes. And we've been able to hold down the tuition and fees. As I look at this overall picture of where we're being pushed by the state withdrawing its influence on our revenue, is the fact that it's pushing us in the direction of having to put more of the weight on tuition and fees and property taxes. And the property tax picture, clearly, Cootney County is the only taxing district. And in order to help address some of those pressures that have been put on the Cootney County taxpayers, we've embarked over the last couple of years on a process of charging a differential tuition to the out-of-state, or, excuse me, out-of-county students. That wasn't done before. We charged people in Bonner and Boundary County the same as the people in Cootney County, and there was historically a liquor fund with a maximum of five hundred dollars per semester, per year, per semester.
Per student, per semester.
Per semester. Which doesn't even come close to covering that differential. When we did the math on it some time ago, Cootney County residents have been, for the last ten or fifteen years, subsidizing the out-of-county students to the tune of somewhere between one thousand and fifteen hundred dollars per semester, per student, for out-of-county students. And we've tried to change that formula a little bit in order to give some tax relief to the people in Cootney County. That puts us in a position of having to charge students from Bonner and Boundary County, and Shoshone County, and Benewak County, more than those in Cootney County. We don't like doing that. We don't like providing differential tuition for students who are all seeking to improve their lives through an education. And in some way, we have to get the other counties who we are servicing to help their students with that differential, whether by creating foundations to help their students with those foundations, with those increased taxes, because I envision that that tuition differential will continue to grow. I think it's the only way to give appropriate tax relief to the people in Cootney County for subsidizing out-of-county students. My point in all saying all this is, it's really a complex system. It seems like the target is ever-moving. When the question was asked about, at what point in time have the students had enough? Have they saturated? I look at the comparison with our competition, and with the other community colleges in both Spokane and in Idaho, and we are very competitive. And so, and that's what I want to see, is us being able to provide the best quality education for the most reasonable price. And that's kind of the sweet spot that we're at right now. I would hate to see us diminish that, the quality of the education, by being overly concerned about some ratio between students and faculty. I really believe that's an academic question in large part, as to what is being, what is necessary in order to fulfill the curriculums, as I've already indicated. I also understand that as the reviews take place of the different courses, if there are courses that there's not enough people signing up for, you can't just drop it. If somebody's already in the midst of a program where they need that course in order to complete their curriculum, you have to taper it down over a period of a year or two. It takes a lot of planning, it takes, there's a lot of complexity in terms of adjusting the faculty level to adjust to all of these various changes. And I see, and I hope that we back up from time to time and take a look at the overall complexity of this picture.
Thank you. Trustee Nielsen.
You know, Chris, I'd like you to look at this chart. I put this together for our board to kind of understand what the taxpayers see. And this board tells the story. I got the numbers from you, so if you disagree with those, if we go to seven million dollars, which is where we're at back in 2006 till today, if it was...
Ron, it's different.
Can you see that?
Better when you're not in front of it.
So, using this, is if we go back to just taking 2006, and let's just go forward, then if we took the full three percent, we would be at ten million dollars. If we take the two, three percent and all the growth, we would be at thirteen million dollars. When we take the forgone taxes, and we look at where we are today, it's fifty. So we think we're doing an incredible job by foregoing our three percent and our growth. What we do is, we stick it in a thing called forgone, we take it all at one time, it raises the bar, and off we go. Is that not true?
That is correct. That's forgone taxes.
So, when we look at this, let's just go to the taxpayers in Cootney County, that we're paying seven million dollars, and we do have some new growth, it's an average, I don't know what the number is, but when you look at a burden of fifteen million dollars, and that our portion keeps getting bigger and bigger, because we can't get the state to do this, so we raise fees, tuition and fees to our students, and we keep raising this taxpayer, at what point, this number right now is one point four million forgone taxes. This is the next step that we'll get again, and then we start this cycle all over again, and pretty soon, our taxpayers are struggling because that their tax burden for the community college there is three to four times more than it is at CSI and CWI, because we can't get the state to be able to do that. We gotta find an alternative for there. Here's our student enrollment dropping down. Here's our class size dropping down. Here's our tuition and fees going up. Those are not healthy and conducive for a good academic environment, in my opinion. So I don't know what else to do. Is I go, and I'm facing the taxpayers here, and I'm looking at this, I feel like I owe them something, not, well, we can't, that doesn't have anything to do with the quality of our education. It doesn't have anything to do, but it has to do with the support that we're gonna get from our taxpayers. We have to be, have a fiduciary responsibility to manage our assets, and that's what you're charged with doing, Chris. So if you can help us figure out how to right-size, not shrink class size, but right-size classroom spaces to where they were four or five years ago, it doesn't matter what the average is, we were able to do that five years ago pretty effective, and today, now we can't do that anymore? I don't agree with that. I think we challenge this institution to come to the table like our local taxpayers have. I think so.
Chris, let me take a crack at that. First of all, that's an awesome chart.
Well, thank you.
I do appreciate that you put all that effort into that chart. I do want to acknowledge the forgone that you mentioned, Ron, because I was on the board when we took the forgone, and very clearly, we took the forgone to purchase the mill site, which is now our education corridor, which is going to be the future home of the joint-use facility, which will serve hundreds and thousands of students, that was when you and I are both dead and gone. And so, we know we made the right decision, taking the forgone and purchasing that property. For me, there's no discussion other than we made the right decision, because we know how many students we're going to serve. It did impact the taxes. And you know what? I agree with you. I think we should take the three percent every year that is allotted by law, because that's what helps our budgets stay sufficient. If we do have to make cuts, I think it needs to be very surgical. And if we cut a program because it's under-enrolled, remember, that's maybe one faculty member for a program. Two programs is maybe two faculty members, if we even get to that point. We're still talking about the rest of the faculty that we need to very seriously consider reinstating the steps that we took from them, from the salary matriarchs. The state has provided a one percent col, is that correct, Dr. Dunlap?
No, they proposed a three percent CEC, and they only fund a third of that, and then the college would fund up the other two-thirds, with the exception of career and technical faculty who are fully funded by the state, the full three percent.
We are stuck with trying to make things equitable, as we should. And so I have a solution, we are gonna go into a budget workshop where we should dig down more, but I do have a solution for the board to ponder, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Banducci. We have a capital improvement fund with, at the end of FY16, we'll have eleven million one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. We have a four million dollar fund balance. Now, we'd like to spend the capital improvement fund on a CTE facility and a joint-use facility, and then a fund balance that we certainly don't want to deplete. But we don't have to raise tuition, we don't have to raise taxes, we can dip into our fund balance. So just think about that for a while. Mr. Banducci.
Gosh, all sorts of things to think about now. Three things, though, real quick. Trustee Howard mentioned that we had not given raises for the last two years. I think that might have been incorrect, because I think we were mandated last year by the state, and I believe we had to give the teachers some money last year, because I remember being the guy that fought to make sure the adjunct faculty was included in that, because originally, they were excluded. So I think we did give the teachers...
A one percent.
Yes, sir.
That was funded by the state, Mr. Banducci, not us.
I understand. It was mandated, I said that, mandated by the state, no problem. But I just wanted to clarify that. Second item, as a businessman myself, and Ron's a businessman, Ron builds great, big, humongous machines, he and Caterpillar do that together. You can be competitive with your peers, with the people you're being compared to, but yet you can still price yourself out of the market. So just the fact that you may have a quote "competitive" price doesn't mean that that's the appropriate price point for the marketplace. In North Idaho, what I might try to price a certain product may not be the same as I might price it in Austin, Texas, or Denver, Colorado, or Sacramento, California. So just because my price is similar to my competitors, doesn't necessarily make that a good price point. So I don't know if that analogy is always great. And even the one we use, we talk about Pocatello, we talk about Cheney, we talk, different dynamics. You know, each of them has their own different paradigm, and a different business model, quite frankly, is how they operate their institutions of higher learning. Another thing is, it was explained to me, and Chris, I believe it was you that explained it to me, is that, and Joe, maybe you simplified this just for the audience's sake, but we actually pay more than two-thirds, because there are some people that we had given raises to, that now we have to pay on top of that the percentage, and we have to take that out of hide. So actually, it's not a clean one-third and two-thirds. We actually have a little bit more of a higher burden, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And if I may just clarify that one point, the reason for that was to remain equal across campus, so that faculty members who teach for the CTE program were paid the same as the academic side.
Wasn't complaining about what was done, my point was that we carry an additional burden on those, because if we raise them as an institution, then the percent increase, the state gives the increase on the part that they were funding, the extra part we threw on there to keep their wage up, we pay the extra percentage on that, plus the...
Correct.
So, okay.
Yes, Mr. Nielsen.
I agree, Christie, that this forgone taxes is a very complicated, and most people don't understand that. I would rather see if we're allowed a three percent growth, and our budget comes back in at, let's just say, a one percent growth, because of whatever reason, that if we are going, instead of putting a forgone tax at two percent into account, there's no money there, it's just a number, that we reward the educational institution or the county that had a balanced budget at that, and give them half of that now, and then stop this forgone tax. Because you see what happens when you, eventually, you just keep putting this number, there's no taxes, everybody thinks that the money's sitting in account. No, it's not. They forgone billing the taxpayers, now the taxpayers don't know, and then we hit them one time with a two point four million dollar burden, and then the next year is two point four, and the next year is two point... We're better off to say if they allowed three percent, we balance the budget at one, we give the other half of that back to the educational institution, the county, and then we don't have this temptation where we have now, we've got another one point four million dollars. Are we gonna go get that? I think that we have a responsibility to balance our budget and to manage this, and if we do that, and we do it for less than there, we take some of that money and say, well done, my faithful, you know...
Trustee Howard.
Let me follow up on that, because, Ron, you and I can find something to agree on here tonight. And I want to celebrate that.
It's seven o'clock, that was awesome, Ken. I mean, you think about that, Ken, how many times do we, the counties use this before, and then it's this big, huge bounce that goes up, and you said, you caught us by surprise. So I'm in.
Well, you need to listen to what I agree on first.
I take it back, then.
I agree that the idea of taking the three percent and putting it into a bank account, or two percent, or whatever it is that we take, in retrospect, is probably the best way to go. This concept of forgone taxes has gotten to be such a nasty word, that it's used to significantly, not you, I'm not talking about you, I'm just talking about everybody, has talked about the concept of forgone taxes as something that was wrong. It's a process that was set up by the legislature, that if you don't take the taxes in a given year, then it goes, you can take them in a later year. And that amount builds up to a certain amount. And so that's what happened when we decided to buy the mill site, is we went back and took some of the taxes that we hadn't taken in earlier years, quote, the forgone taxes. It has caused a lot of heartburn for a lot of people. And the word forgone taxes has created a lot of problems. And so if we just take three percent every year, or two percent, or whatever, I don't know if we can give anything back, because that's a legislative thing, that I think the legislature has to do that. But I would propose, quite frankly, for this budget year, that I would ask the administration to give us a proposal of what the impact would be of raising property taxes one, two, and three percent, so that we can take a look at it in terms of our workshop, and in terms of our second reading. It may well be that that would be an appropriate thing for us to embark on, is to take the, even though the administration's presented us with a balanced budget based upon the figures that they've, the tuition and increases that they've shown, it may well be that that's appropriate, because if everybody, as everybody will recall, and quite frankly, this still troubles me, is that we have committed ourselves to build a CTE facility, which we should build, it's something that we needed to build, but we took essentially all of the money that was in our capital account, and all the money that will be coming into the capital account for the next two years. And plus, we have said, to the extent that we're gonna be short, and we may be short five hundred thousand dollars or so, I think it was a projection, that we, this board agreed to do a tax anticipation bond, so we've kind of committed ourselves, at least, this board, to do a tax anticipation bond, because we've drained all those accounts. Well, maybe we ought to start filling those accounts back up with some one or two or three percent of the property taxes, so that we're not looking at a tax anticipation bond. And we don't have the money now for a joint-use facility unless it comes from some donor someplace. So we have drained many of our accounts, we do have a capital reserve, a certain percentage of that is required by the accountants, I think, in good accounting purposes, to keep it at a certain level. But we've already agreed to invade that to the tune, I think, with two million dollars in order to support the CTE facility. So we have done a lot in terms of trying to provide for the future of NIC, in terms of providing for the facilities that are necessary. And I agree with you, that I think we ought to be looking at this three percent tax increase, and maybe doing, taking some or all of it this year.
Thank you. Board, I'd really like, at this point, to, if we could hold our questions for the workshop, because it's getting late, we still have a full agenda. Are all of you in agreement? Trustee Meyer.
I'm in agreement, except for a couple more housekeeping things to request for the budget.
Okay.
And then, I hear you, we're trying to wrap this up. A couple things, it would be helpful to have Ron's chart available to all of us to look at, and certainly for the administration to look at. Ken, you mentioned county revenue, it isn't gonna solve the problem this year, but it's part of our planning, and one of the reasons we're here in Sandpoint is to help with our outreach. I know you've been working on, as a institution, inviting other counties outside of Cootney County to help participate. That isn't an answer now, but it probably needs to stay on our list of ways to work on revenue. I want to remind us, and we're looking at some of the charts here, that the CPI is at two percent. So to me, that's a bit of a barometer as to where are we in that process. For housekeeping, forgone taxes is, for me, part of what we in business do, is we need to have reserves to do, and already, we know some things are coming up, so I don't see forgone, I just see acquiring some sources of revenue. We'll need to figure out where, to be sure we have our supplies on hand. Our powder is dry. On chart, or page two of the seventeen that you gave us today, I just had a question about, this is titled, General Fund and Operating Budget Considerations. The comments on the right-hand side of the page, because you were helping us know what you thought about when you did this one. Thank you. The first one is decrease in adjunct due to antispay reduction, we talked about that. And that looks like you show a difference, a shrinkage there, is, oh, it, point nine up there on the chart. New funding from state for advanced manufacturing, you identified that. Sure enough, there comes that money. Then the next line, for academic support and student services, you show the word decrease... show the word decrease in operating expenses, but the numbers up there are increases?
Correct. So what we were trying to show there is the operating expenses include the salary impact. So we actually had decreases in these areas prior to adding back in the impact of a two-step increase.
Okay. So you might clarify that. And then at the bottom of the page, scroll down. It was hard for me to understand, and my chart doesn't look like yours.
Those shouldn't have been printed. Those notes at the bottom were just the calculations that feed the others.
Okay. That matches my question mark, then. Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay. And I think—I guess the other concept I want to do, and then we do need to wrap up, is we've talked about getting revenue, but we probably need to keep hearing about how we can cut things that we already have. And it's a balance act that's painful, no matter which way we go. But I think along the way for our next workshop, more ideas on cut. For me, as I looked at the chart, and I will send it on to you, Chris, with my notes, the employing credit student chart, the graph that we've been talking about. And the next one I mentioned to you, there's some pretty big increases there that we have to look at, was also the adjunct faculty numbers. They don't drop as much as enrollment does, so we need to talk about that some more. So those are some areas I think would help us in our next budget workshop. And that completes my comment.
All right. Thank you.
Christie, very fast. If I may, please. Those notes were on the original page two when you gave it to us in the mini-meeting, so. And the second thing is, just in case there's anybody out there that's technically astute to this, it'd be a tax anticipation note.
Correct.
Out of bond. So just a technical correction there. Go to that.
Mr. Nielsen.
Last thing for you, Chris. First of all, Sarah did a beautiful chart here, which is the same information that's here. If she could forward that, and then I will send this on so we can compare those, showing that same information here. This is—hers is a lot more academic and harder for me to read, so I'm sorry.
Is this what you're looking at, this one from Sarah?
Yeah.
I don't think we're all—
And then—
I got a couple left to copy.
If you would be—if you'd be so kind, Chris, is that if you could just go to have a review and just saying, "Is there a possibility, when we look at the total classrooms, the total students, the number of similar-type classes and some consolidation," I'd like for you to go back and come back to us before we hit the budget back in a couple of weeks and to say, "We went through this process, and we believe that there is some good opportunities now, if we get in front of this anticipating this 10%, that we could do some consolidation and possibly reduce some of the number of classrooms."
Trustee Meyer.
I'm sure Chris has a chance to write all these profound thoughts down. Thank you. Ron mentioned something I think we ought to be sure and do, and as a board, these are the best charts we've had. They're helpful. When we get them all integrated, it'll be even better. But the concept of some of the things you're doing here, I think, helps us learn how to work with a challenging situation. So I want to be sure and thank the staff time, not only for what you've done, but for what's ahead.
And I would like to make sure that Ron provides each of us that size of a chart.
No problem. I'll put a frame. I wouldn't frame for you, so.
If we make it smaller, will the numbers get smaller?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, trustees, I really appreciate your time. I know that this is a challenging conversations, and I really appreciate the guidance that you've given tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Do we all need a short break, or you want to power through? I'm hearing yes.
I'm full.
I'm ready to go through.
Oh, now I have to take a vote.
I personally wouldn't mind five minutes.
All right. We'll take a five-minute break. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back to the April 22, 2015 NIC Board of Trustees meeting. We are now going on to the President's Report. President Dunlap.
Thank you, Madam Chair, trustees, colleagues. On behalf of Ron Nielsen, thank you for that five-minute break.
You're welcome.
In the interest of time, the constituents have asked me to give their report tonight, so it'll be one continuous report, including mine, and it should be shorter than normal. So on behalf of the Staff Assembly and the Staff Assembly Chair, Carol Jones, this past month, Alex Harris, Director of Student Development, and Stacy Hudson, Director of Communications and Marketing, presented a debriefing and review of the recent Shelter and Place Drill held at NIC on January 21. The drill afforded us the opportunity to test our alert system and Cardinal Contact Emergency Notification Systems, as well as allow students, faculty, and staff to experience their level of preparedness for an emergency drill. Alex actually went out and surveyed students and employees, and we had over 570 responses to that survey. So there was a very high interest in the results for that drill. And there clearly are some areas where we can improve, but we actually did better than we thought we would. So that's good news. Also, Beth Ann Fuller, Director of Head Start, gave the Staff Assembly an overview of the Head Start School Readiness Program, which benefits 293 children in the five northern counties with an emphasis on helping those families who will benefit the most from their services. Beth Ann also invited—extended an invitation to attend the upcoming family celebrations at the Lakeland Center on April 23 and Post-Fall Center on April 20. In addition, our guest speakers, we are currently in the process of selecting—in addition to our guest speakers, I'm sorry—we are currently in the process of selecting Staff Assembly officers for the upcoming year. A new Vice Chair, Secretary, and Senators will be selected, and our current Vice Chair, Jessica Grant, will step into the role of Chair at the May meeting. We are also continuing our nomination of voting process for Staff Appreciation Awards, which will be presented at the commencement breakfast on May 15. On behalf of the Faculty Assembly and Aaron Davis, at our meeting, we elected officers for the 2015-16 school year. Aaron Davis was re-elected as Chair, John Meisner was re-elected as Vice Chair, and Tracy Struble was elected as Secretary-Treasurer. Nominations were also open for five Open Faculty Senate positions for school year 15 through 16, and nominations will remain open until noon Wednesday, May 13, and we will elect Senators at our May 14 meeting. Maureen Steinel and Holly Edwards updated faculty on upcoming events related to NIC's Common Read. This year, the Common Read was nickel-and-dimed in America. They reviewed the process and committees involved. The select—in the selecting the Common Read included over 20 faculty, staff, ASNC representatives from three different committees that were involved in the process. They also previewed the process for selecting the next Common Read for this following year, and it was announced that the theme will be "Culture and Racial Diversity." And then, an ad hoc committee to discuss and address the issue of faculty librarian development was formed. Joe Jacoby, Bob Bennett, James Love, Ann Johnston, Jim DeMoss, and Brian Ziperlee will serve on that committee. And on behalf of ASNC, Richard Fortman, elections ended last week, and the new officers that are appointed for next year are President Maria Paluzzi, Vice President Colin Kolquehoune, Senators Michelle Clarkson, Samantha Loman, Garrett Welch, Sean Collins, and Philip Hagan. And the ASNC Appreciation Banquet is scheduled for March—or, excuse me, not March, April 30 from 5:00 to 7:00, and the theme is "School Spirit." With regards to my report, the governor transferred a mine safety grant—or the state mine safety grant—from University of Idaho to North Idaho College because it fit with our mission much better than it fit with University of Idaho. And we will be doing mine safety training throughout the state, and that grant will be approximately $138,000 and comes with equipment and a vehicle for an individual. Three of our trades and industry programs competed at the State Skills USA Competition at the end of last week and did quite well. In collision repair technology, Aubrey Thompson took home the gold medal. In welding solo competition, our team swept the awards podium with Thomas Tanner winning gold, Matt Kramer winning silver, and John Poole winning bronze. In the welding team fabrication competition, our team of Cordhill, Randy Polito, and Tim Weigert took home first place and the silver medal. In HVAC, Scott—or Mike Scott took home the silver. We also received notification that our Associate of Nursing reaccreditation has been completed. We have a report due in two years, and if the report is acceptable, we will not have an onsite visit until 2022. May 30—just some dates that you should be aware of. May 13, RN registered nurse ceremony in Schuler Auditorium. May 15 is graduation that begins with a breakfast in the morning. May 18, our summer session begins. And today, our American Indian Advisory Board met in Embry's, and we had representatives from the Cootney, Coeur d'Alene, and Nez Perce tribe represented. And then lastly, I want to mention that Inland Northwest Blood Center has established a foundation and has dedicated scholarship money to Spokane Community College, NIC, and LCSC to the tune of $3,000 per year for phlebotomy students. And Madam Chair, that completes my report.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions for Dr. Dunlap? Joe, I just have one. The awards that our students won in the competition, is that a regional—how big of a competition is that?
It's a regional competition, and it qualifies those students to go back to nationals.
That is really impressive.
Yeah, they did very well.
Great. All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Trustee Banducci.
Sidebar on that, I guess, and I know Philippe's folks have won awards, too. One of the things I've never really asked is, for those students, some may be kids, some may be older adults, how do we support that if they go back to nationals? Do we help underwrite that? Transportation logic?
Yes, we do. We—if they go back to a national competition, we do fund that up.
So they're able to do so, not having a financial burden?
Right.
Thank you, Dr. Dunlap. That takes us to our K-Tech Board Report. Mr. Nielsen.
Yes. For those that do not know what K-Tech stands for, it's Cootney Technical Education Campus. It's a unique education campus where three school districts come together—Coeur d'Alene School District, Post-Fall School District, and Rathrum School District. And they send their 10th—sorry, their 11th and 12th graders there for half a day. And how they got this started was that all three school districts on the same day ran a levy and had to pass it at 66 2/3%. Incredible achievement. How they're doing, they just announced at our last board meeting, record enrollment. They will beat all the years prior, 464 students have already enrolled for the next year. Were sold out, or classroom spaces are full. And Manufacturing Engineering, which is a kind of a unique education where they teach them a little bit about AutoCAD, manual lathe, CNC, pneumatics, hydraulics, that type of stuff. And they also are sold out in welding, and both of our CNA healthcare classes are sold out in diesel tech. So they've got a few openings there, but they're looking to go to a third semester, and they don't want to do that. We did that one time, and it turned out to be too hard for the students. But they're excited. Our Executive Director has been there—the new one we have for the last couple of years—and just did his job evaluation. He had glowing reports. And the interesting part about that is the guy that came in here originally had run strictly a high school career and technical education campus with very little interaction with the higher education. And Tim Fortune, who is now our Executive Director there, has been working very, very close with NIC. We're starting to see some real fruits of that labor, of the marriage there. Joe's got one of his career and technical education directors there that is doing an incredible job, and he talks every single time about the collaboration and how they look forward to continued and using the success of K-Tech into a feeder. A statistic that is incredible, and we've talked about it before, is 97.3% of those kids that took these courses either graduate— they graduated with a high school diploma, and one of three things. They either had —they got their diploma for sure, but they got a certificate, a job offer, went on to continued education, or went into the military. All of those are considered success. So 97.3 of those kids know where they're going when they walk out of high school. And I think in today's world, I think a lot of kids are confused. And we're seeing a higher percentage of kids going on to continued education because they found a place to apply it. So where we maybe thought that this campus would take away from a higher education, we're finding it's the contrary. It's been a very good feeder for higher education. So that ends my report. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Ron, for the report and for covering for the meeting, since I was not able to attend, and I will try to. We'll confirm when the next meeting is, and I'll either coordinate that with you or with someone else to cover it. Two thoughts. One, I, too, although I've not been to as many meetings, have been pleased with our new Director, Tim Fortune. So we have a good fortune there to celebrate. Also, I want to be sure that, as we talk about enrollment, that that administration is, in fact, coordinating with the folks at K-Tech for those that are enrolled in programs that are going to feed into ours, that the—not only the enrollment numbers, but then the retention. You're teaching us more about if people sign up, but will they complete it so that we have them tuned up to join into our program would be one of the things I think you're consistently highlighting, and I would do that again with our administration, to be sure and chase that. So I think we meet every month for K-Tech through the summer also.
Yep.
So we'll need to coordinate those meeting dates. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Let me make a comment on that, is that—in collaboration with the new CTE Center going out alongside there, that they've rearranged the footprint so that the diesel, the auto all match up, and they've actually put in a road system between there, and that they will share to the best of their ability some of the high-end things, that there's some things like plasma burners and some CNC machine centers and things like that, that they will—they're working very close together to make sure that we cross-utilize instructors and possibly even have kids do dual enrollment, because some of these kids in their last semester, their senior year, could do both morning and afternoon classes. So it'd be a great opportunity for them to continue on and get their advanced degrees while they're still in high school.
So we have three school districts and a community college sharing resources. It doesn't get better than that. Dr. Dunlap?
Excuse me. Consistent with the success of the partnership and the success of us taking this on the road, Mark Browning had a great suggestion, and that is that maybe in our next one or two board meetings, we have it at K-Tech, and that would give us the opportunity to do a symbolic groundbreaking and to kick off our fundraising effort. And so that may provide a great opportunity. Don't need an answer, but I'd like for the board members to consider that.
Okay. All right. Trustee Howard.
A question, I guess, that I guess I'd like to put out there, and maybe we can get an answer over the next number of months. The success rate of 97% is very impressive, no question about that. And the programs are to be congratulated with what they're doing. But when we have students that are in those K-Tech programs who go to the military, or they go on to higher education, or they graduate, or they get a job, those are different categories. And I guess it would be helpful, from NIC's standpoint, if we knew how many of them were going from the K-Tech program to some kind of technical training, from welding into welding, or from whatever, so that we can help project the kind of attendance that we might be expecting, the kind of synergy, I guess, from the students that are attending K-Tech and coming on to NIC. The number, from my perspective, is simply one of helping us plan our facility. The number from my perspective is simply one of helping us plan our facility and making sure that we're able to provide some kind of seamless education for those that are going to be coming from the K-Tech to the NIC facility. And if it's 10% of those students or 50%, it helps us understand that future.
To answer your question, is, was last year, they pulled some data together, and I believe it was they traced 46 high school graduates that went right into similar programs within NIC, so that they're, but I can tell you the collaboration that's taken place now with Doug Anderson from NIC and Tim talking about higher level as a certification in welding and starting to talk about the going from a CNA certification to registered nurse program, I think that that number's going to grow significantly this year.
So Mr. Nielsen and Trustee Meyer, you both sit on the K-Tech board, so I guess we'll tell you the number that we'd like to see is 464.
That's right.
All right. Anything else on that topic? Yes, Trustee Meyer.
Thinking about both our budgeting process and we as a board for setting policy and the folks that are doing K-Tech and potentially CTE, I was reminded that our State Board of Education has established a 60% charge to primarily community colleges, and I think J-FAC did figure out to help fund some of that charge. But I want to be sure in our budgeting process and in our student services for how do we recruit, retain, the same thing, maybe during our budget meeting, our good president and whoever else needs to can show us that three or five-year plan for us to meet the criteria, which is 60% of folks who, oh, I lost the phrase, need to be able to be certified post secondary certification of some kind or education by the year 2020? Is that the number that they've shown out? Okay. And all of a sudden, that's getting closer and closer as we look at our budgeting process.
My only question on that is, should that be part of the budget hearing workshop? You're looking for a five-year plan on how to get there?
I'm saying some, two things. One, sure, we, you all may have that, but as part of our budget, are there places that we need to highlight in that budget for things we're doing to begin to meet that need?
So you just want them to speak to areas of the budget that would, okay. Is that Chris and Dr. Dunlap? All right, thank you. All right, that takes us on to our second reading and approval of the Student Recreation Center. Graydon Stanley, John Totten, and Richard Portman. It looks like just Graydon.
To this point.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, President Dunlap, and other guests, thank you for the opportunity to be back here tonight again in front of you for the second reading of the Student Rec Center request. I am sure you have noted that the team has joined us again up here in Sandpoint tonight, so I just want to acknowledge them again. There've been a huge number of people who've been involved in providing a lot of information that's been given to you over the last couple of months. I particularly want to note some of the leadership of that team again. John Totten, you've heard from many times, and John here's tonight. Jess is here as well, and she's talked about program. Heather has been a part of that as well and appeared in front of you, and Steve McGordy has managed most of the financial part, and all of them have joined us here tonight and know that they are certainly at your disposal if you have additional questions in the areas that they've presented. We do have available the same information you've received in the packet and what's been presented available on the PowerPoint as well, so we're glad to review any of that, but don't want to take you all back through, but only by your request. There are three key points that I want to touch on real quickly, and I am going to refer to the PowerPoint. You have this in your board packet as well, and I've changed the order a little bit. I want to thank, first of all, I want to thank Trustee Meyer for bringing this to our attention. Recently, there was a concern about the institutional master plan, where we were going, and some of the board members were on the board in 2012 when John Mueller came and presented a vision, while it wasn't adopted by the board, it was a vision for the future of the campus, and it included a connection of green space with development of the mill site, and then green space for existing areas of the campus. And that's what's illustrated in this drawing and what you had in your board packet. And the concern that Trustee Meyer expressed, and it was echoed by John Mueller, who did the work for us, was that by placement of the rec center in some green space that had been suggested, it would really interrupt that connection that was planned. The committee had had that as a part of their thinking as well, and had been addressing that, but we asked for further refinement, so we went back to ALSC. And I want to note again tonight that Dave and his colleague Indy have joined us here tonight, and they real quickly put together some answers, and it's what we produced in front of you tonight. So I just want to draw the board's attention to the fact that here was that plan that Trustee Meyer was referring to, and then if we go to the next slide, let me get you there. If we go to the next slide, you can see it's that same green space that John Mueller had suggested, and now we have the Student Rec Center placed in there. You can probably more easily see it in your packet, but up on the screen as well, you can see it just on the corner there, River, right behind Wynton. And what it does in fact is it preserves, and in fact, we think it enhances that green space. I took a walk out there when we were doing that planning and noted that all that pedestrian area, all those sidewalks that had been developed to bring you to the original site of the campus dead-ended right to the tennis court. And so you would walk there, and you'd hit the tennis court and then have to go around. So if the rec center had been placed there, they dead-end right to the rec center. With this adjustment and a bit of the movement of the rec center to the west, closer toward Wynton Hall, and then the continuation of that green space, it provides a great area, not only for moving from the mill site to the original campus, but also to do some indoor and outdoor programming associated with the rec center. It also, I might note, with some of the design that at least at this point is being considered, it creates some cover for students that might be coming into campus where the walkway could be sheltered by some of the construction of the building, and I'll show you more about that in a second. This is the next slide, and I hope you can get a sense of the orientation. I'm going to follow this. Just a second. So you have the residence hall right here, here's Wynton, and here's the river, and some tennis courts are in this area right now. So it's removing that tennis court, preserving all parking on this side, eliminating about 35 parking spots here, which is not a large percentage, and then still maintaining this green belt from here. All those sidewalks come right to this area and would transition. This is an overhung area, it's just a conceptual design at this point, but would create some sheltered walkways on one side of the campus. Let me just take you to a couple others here real quickly. Here's another concept of the drawing, looking at it from the other direction, you can see the residence hall on the top side, river's the closest to it. And again, where that white area is, is currently where all those pedestrian walkways come to, and so we feel like this really just enhances the plan, Trustee Meyer, that you were making reference to. You should note, we received correspondence today from John Mueller as well, who came back and said he was so pleased with what we had done with this, that it not only maintained that vision, but it further enhanced it. So John Mueller was endorsing this as well. And lastly, this gives you some sense of that design that I was talking about. This would be looking at it from the riverside and looking toward campus. That building you see in the background, that building would be the edge of the residence hall. So when I talked about a sheltered walkway, the green space would not go underneath that building there. That would be sidewalk of some sort, but that would provide passageway for students going into the campus, as well as in our initial design, we've talked about having that so that space can be open, we can do indoor and outdoor recreational programming from that first floor. So we like that concept. But Trustee Meyer, we appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and we feel like we've addressed that in a way that not only preserves, but in fact enhances what we had in front of us in 2012, so thank you. So I wanted to note that. So the other points that I was certainly aware of, one of this was about the location, and the committee had done a lot of work in coming up with the right place. I think we were in agreement that this was generally the right place, had that concern about the protecting this green space, and we've addressed that. You've heard now for probably the last at least five years that when we talked about a rec center, another concern certainly was the cost to students. What you've heard from most of the committees previously and us initially was, we anticipated that that cost would probably be close to $100 in, $100 per semester to those students. In most recent surveys, the cost that we were projecting out was $100 and asking students if they still supported that, and we had incredible support from our student body saying that they would support a Student Rec Center at that cost. I'm so pleased with the work that the committee has done, and then working with Sir and Chris and others in the business office, Steve McGordy as well, that what you have in front of you, you know now is not a cost of $100, which would have made that more difficult to support, but instead a cost of about $37, a cost of what translates to about $3 per credit in this first year, and we understand the next year it goes up, but it doesn't go up anywhere near to that $100 again. And then as we look at the opportunities in 2017 and 2022, we have opportunities to relook at that again, as this is just an increase of an existing fee, it's not the addition of a new fee. We think, despite the fact that we've had enrollment changes, this has been indexed according to our projections of enrollment, which we think are real conservative, that 10% decrease, we outperformed the 10% decrease that we expected this last year. We did better than that. We anticipate doing better than that. Vice President Martin indicated, as you looked at enrollment trends, we think we've reached the bottom of that trough. We think that's a well-educated decision that we're going to start, we're going to go back to that 2009 and continue that slow growth pattern that we're almost past that bubble. The figures that have been in front of you from Steve McGordy and from Chris Martin are really conservative figures. So we were having the conversation earlier, we like to under-promise and over-perform, and we anticipate doing exactly that with the figures that you've seen. Lastly, what I'd like to share with you before I ask Richard to come up is, I try often not to refer to my previous employer, because I'm so pleased to be in Coeur d'Alene at North Idaho College, but one of the things that I draw from, and I can attest to tonight, is I had the good fortune of being in charge of the development of a rec center on the colleges of the Idaho's campus, from the financing to the design to the operation, and I was a part of that all the way through. And I can guarantee you that the investment that the students made there, if you could go back from any year, any user, that they would tell you that was very worthwhile. The use of the center, not only by the students, far exceeded from day one through, it's been about seven years now, has far exceeded what we ever anticipated. We developed a business plan, just like you've seen for this, that said, we're going to generate this amount of revenue to manage our operations, and we outperformed that every year, and I would tell you with the plan that we put together, we will outperform those projections when we see how popular this facility will be, how much our students will enjoy it, how much our employees will enjoy it. We think it's a great investment in North Idaho College on behalf of our students. I would remind you, in light of the discussion certainly with tuition and fees, what makes this a bit different from my perspective is, this is our students. These are those people that we serve on our campus who are saying, we want a rec center, and who are saying, we want to pay for it. We have said, we've surveyed, we've done all that work, we feel like we've provided you a lot of good information, and the students have stood behind that consistently and said, we're willing to pay for this facility that we want. It'll serve them, it'll serve our community, it'll serve the college in the future. So I really encourage you to support that request on behalf of the students tonight. I'm so appreciative and proud of the work that the committee's done. At this point, I'd like to introduce again our student body president, you should note, tonight is his last meeting, so we want to at the same time recognize the representation that Richard has provided on behalf of the students. Wish him the very best. We know he's going to be successful, and note that we're thankful for your service too. Thank you, Richard.
To be 100% frank, I'm not exactly sure what to say after that wonderful introduction there. Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, President Dunlap, Vice Presidents Board, and guests. It is my pleasure to be here once again to present not new information to you, but present some continued information. I'm also looking forward to that discussion that we had last time at the Board of Trustees, where you said, do not be discouraged, these are healthy conversations, and that I'll be pleasantly surprised when I come back this time, so we'll see. Now, the will of the students has been consistent throughout the years, and my voice is the voice, like I said last time, of over a decade and a half of want for this project. Mr. Stanley did point out that it is something that the students have continually, through surveys, showed that they show their support for and are willing to pay 100% of that and take that responsibility upon themselves. In addition to that, if anything happens, it's the students' responsibility, and we understand that, and we don't want to put anything onto the college that we love so much that is going to jeopardize our education. And we've put a lot of thought into this through workshops and continued conversations with our students as being the representatives for the students. So that being said, I mean, I'd love to add more, but Graydon did such a great job, that I would like to introduce this wonderful guy right here, John, that's going to articulate some more of the points that you guys had and some concerns that the board had from last time, so.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Madam Chair, trustees, all you lovely people, thank you for having me back. I just want to take this opportunity to one more time thank the committee that put a lot of work into this. It's been exactly one year since I picked up a torch that's been burning for over 12 years, and is going to keep burning until we figure this out. We need to make this happen. It's time. The students have been on it, the administration is on board, every constituent group that we can think of has been addressed. You've seen the philosophy and programming potential in the last two presentations. I think we've nailed the location. I think it's going to be great. These are the best renditions we've seen yet, and they look, they really excite someone like me to potentially get an opportunity to use a facility like this, and we've built with the support of the Dorm Housing Commission, a conservative and adequate budget to make this happen and to make sure that we don't burden the institution with this project. And so I'm here with the support of the leadership team to field any questions you might have at this point.
Thank you, John. Board, are there questions from last time? Mr. Nielsen?
Just some clarification, that the $37 is quite a deal, considering you don't get anything for it. So that first year, we're building a fund, and there's nothing wrong with that, that's how I would approach it as well. Just to reconfirm, John, no cost to the college, no liability to the college, and with the guarantee that we got from Graydon that we will make a payroll deduction if it runs short. Is that a fair statement?
So close. Yes, for the most part, yes. Again, this is built 100% on the student fees, which they have approved, and that's it. The building will support itself with student fees.
Thank you. Mr. Banducci.
Richard has alluded to the various surveys that have been done, and I have to tell you, I'm either not hanging out with the right faculty, the right students, or the right taxpayers, because the feedback that I've had, and it was interesting that Trustee Howard said, give it another month and see if people come forward or not, and I've actually had more feedback in the last month than I'd had previously. And I even talked to one of the faculty who is not opposed to the rec center, just the methodology and questioned how we've determined the interest. And I guess here's my concern, when you say we've done surveys, and I'm not going to get on you about if they were statistically, you know, what the sample size was, if they're statistically significant, what the margin of error is in the sampling rate, and we could go down a whole thing about, you know, how scientific it was or not. My question is almost more, what are the absolute numbers, and how many students have actually been polled? You know, one of the things that was said to me, one person said, hey, I'd really support this if there'd been a vote. And what you should have done is, at the start of the second semester, everybody that came in to register for that second semester, you vote yes or you vote no. If you say yes, then we're going to add this much to what you're paying, if you say no, then we won't. And when I look at the ASNC election results, which I printed off, congratulations to those that were elected, the winning person for president had 203 votes. The compiled amount of votes for the vice president was about 215, if my quick math, 213, 218, whatever it was, and the most for any of the senators was 174. We're talking thousands of students, thousands, and many that are not on our main campus. And so I come back to, I'm hearing feedback from several quarters on this, and I look at the numbers, and I'm trying to think, what's actually representative of these people taxing themselves, and I'm going to call it a tax, putting a fee on themselves. And I've got to be honest, I'm struggling with that. And we do surveys, if I grab my guys, my two best friends, and their best 10 friends and a couple others, I could be a senator. I mean, it doesn't take that much to get there if you just get a few motivated people, and you hit the right time, and you put something in chalk on the sidewalk there and a couple signs, and pass out Tootsie Rolls. So, I mean, how many people we surveyed? You know, we pick 100 of our best friends and said- You know, we pick 100 of our best friends and said that we want to build a rec center, and the teachers go, woo-hoo, just sounds good to us, we get a place we can walk to.
I think, Trustee Banducci, I think we have to realize the perspective of how all decisions in voting are made in the United States of America. We've all been represented by people that we necessarily didn't vote for, or I didn't make it to the polls that day, right? And that's the process that we've engaged in multiple times on our campus. So, no differently than when you all elected to serve our institution.
I think I had 16,000 votes out of Cutney County, which is huge.
Yeah, and then so, when we look at our turnouts, we've had some really positive results by comparison to student turnout in the past over the years, and that's a fact. And so, if we were to change how we did that and make a mandatory vote, I think we would be challenging the institution of all elections in our country, because that's just not how it works, right? We have an opportunity to say so, the students do an incredible job to announce the elections. It's everywhere you look.
But you could do it, it's a captive audience. Everybody has to enroll, everybody has to register, so at that point, you'd have had that opportunity. A little different. I mean, I hear your argument, and I think I had 25,000 votes, there's about 70,000 registered in Cutney County.
So, Mr. Banducci, though, the process is done, and so, we're not, we're just not here to debate the process.
No, no, sorry. You're right. I expressed my concern, so there it is.
Thank you.
He countered with.
Trustee Howard.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the construction of the student rec center as proposed and at the location, identify the materials presented to us, which is location four, preserving the green space identified therein, and approve the increase in student fees of up to $100 per semester to finance the center, all subject to the approval of the Dormitory Housing Commission.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion?
Just one, thanks, I don't deserve any more recognition than anybody else. I happen to remember the green corridor issue is probably one as a board we still need to come back to because we have not left enough direction for you all to function, which we'll get better at. And I think we've talked about maybe in the next couple of months, having a workshop to, in fact, workshop, call it what it is, whatever we need to call it, to come to terms with some of the master planning for our campus.
Trustee Nielsen.
John and Richard and Grayden, you guys have worked very hard for this, and I don't know why it took so long for this board to agree to do this. I mean, it seems like with all the information you have and the homework that you did, that this is the right thing. You're very, very blessed when you have a willing customer that is willing to pay and you don't have to go get from there. So, I say kudos to what you guys have been able to do, the hard work that you put into that, and I think it's going to be a wonderful day, the day we cut the ribbon, so.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Congratulations. Richard, will you stay for a moment and give us an opportunity?
Hey, let's get, say something, Grayden, look at this.
It's okay, Grayden.
Come on, Grayden, you've got to say something.
Get him a tissue. It's wonderful. Richard, we want to take the opportunity, this is the last time we get to address you as student body president, and we're so proud of how you represented our students. And meeting after meeting, you came here and put your best efforts forward, your strong voice for the students, strong advocate. We wish you a lot of success in the future. I don't know if you've told us what happens after this.
Oh, after this, wow, hopefully great things, right? Life is what you make it, though, so it will be great things. It will be University of Idaho is my final decision based off of a lot of thinking, and I love the great state of Idaho, so why not stay here?
What's studying, what is you studying?
Your study?
Study, engineering, engineering. Haven't declared now. It was petroleum, but I'm switching things up.
That's great. Mr. Nielsen.
I think, Richard, you measure the size of a man by the quality of his character, and you're a giant, my friend. It was a pleasure working with you.
You know, I would like to say that I was truly blessed, and I've done a lot of prayer. I don't usually talk about my faith much, but I did a lot of prayer and I did a lot of thinking before I took on this decision, and a lot of support to stay in this position. And, gosh, what a wonderful reward at the end. And NIC is an amazing place, and you guys are amazing people, we all are, and it's just been an honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, we just have a few more things to get through, Board. We have our, what we would now be calling tab three, four? Okay, I'm just going to say first reading, revised fundraising policy 7.03, Rayelle Anderson. Welcome, Rayelle.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, President Dunlap, Mr. Lyons, colleagues and guests, and congratulations to the students. No surprise, Grayden and I score very similarly on the DISC personality profile, quite emotional people. If Al was in the room, he would be crying too, because that's where we fall on that chart. So, tonight, I'm here before you. Part of the policy review of the institution has been the last couple of years to review all the policies and procedures of the institution. And so, the two that I've had the privilege to work on, fundraising policy 7.03, what you're going to see is that this policy basically is the framework to coordinate the colleges' fundraising and development activities as an institution. We do that to ensure continuity with the college's priorities and mission as it's summarized in your tab, and also to avoid conflict and duplication in fundraising efforts in our community and greater region. So, I just want to make a couple of notes. The policy revisions that you're seeing, there was a lot of strikeouts in this, and the revisions really are, a separation of policy is the what you do, and the procedure is the how you do it. So, we cleaned up the what in the policy and moved a lot of the, you know, how you do it into the procedure. So, you're going to see that mostly tonight. This is a reflection, the policy is, of best practices that we really have been utilizing here at North Idaho College for some time. If I'm correct, the policy was written back in the early 90s. And so, with that, we took on cleaning up, and I want to credit the Senate for helping really massage the information so that it was easier for them as users to use. So, truly, the content of the document is not significantly different, but I'll offer up any questions you might have. You'll see in policy that some things were simplified and moved over to procedure. So, with that, I'm happy to stand for questions.
All right, Board, this is a first reading of policy. You will see it again at the next meeting. Do you have any questions tonight?
I do.
Trustee Howard.
Rayelle, looking, and by the way, thank you for giving us the procedure as well as the policy. It's always handy to be able to see how the policy is going to be adopted in terms of the procedure. And on the proposed policy, on the last line, it talks about prior approval of the college president or the director of development department and executive director of NIC I don't know that that kind of authority level was described in the earlier policy. You brought the college president into it now, and I don't know that that was in the prior policy. But I guess what I'm wondering about is why the or? Either the college president and the director of development? And by the way, director of development is you, right?
I wear two hats. I'm the director of development for the institution and then also serve as executive director of the foundation.
And assuming that in the future, that maybe that's broken into two functions or whatever, I can understand describing both of them in this policy.
Right.
But I guess I'm wondering why we have the college president brought into this approval process?
Policy is your, the board's directive on how fundraising and development happens at North Idaho College. It is the president as your administrative leader, the daily operations, the institution, he says go or no-go on whether or not the colleges, the institution can go out and fundraise for different projects and priorities. There's a process in place. The foundation is the vehicle through which the college partners with institutionally to raise dollars with. They also do that with the Booster Club, but the development department, which also has that foundation as part of their three-pronged department initiative, so you have development has grants, alumni relations, and foundation as part of that, that policy really is the institution's outline on how to, how business for fundraising can happen. So, the foundation doesn't have any policy control whatsoever. It's just the college through that policy, through your college president, and he happens to hire a staff person and a department to fulfill that obligation. He serves as the president as the secretary of the foundation. So, that duty, back in 1977 when the foundation was established, the college president Barry Schuler appointed a staff person to handle that level of detail. In the 80s, a vice president for advancement was hired at the institution, which handled those duties in collaboration with the president following the policy. I basically went in and just updated the titles.
I guess the reason for my question is if it's important to have a representative of the college and a representative of the foundation, which makes sense, then why not say and rather than or?
Sure. We can do that, sorry. Sorry, Ken, I was ready for.
This was over an and and an or, an and versus an or.
Yeah, I mean, I can understand the importance, quite frankly, of screening some donations because of the way they may be viewed by the public, whether or not they're appropriate or not, whether they have restrictions that may not be appropriate for the college, and other things that you've outlined in the procedure.
Okay.
I just, I'm wondering why we don't have the college president and the director of the foundation.
We can do that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anything further on this first reading? All right, thank you. And that takes us to, you're still with us, the first reading of grant coordination policy 7.03.01. Rayelle.
Very good. This policy came about not too many years ago, and it really is how the institution, in the best interest of the institution, what the proper approach is to enter into grant agreements, grant seeking for federal, for state, and for private dollars as it relates to the institution as a whole. So, this policy was approved prior and has very few edits, really just a few minor modifications reflected in this policy.
Okay. Board, this is again a first reading, and we will see it again. Do you have any questions currently on this policy? Hearing none, we'll see you back next month.
Great.
Discuss it further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got some informational items, our career technical education facility update. Chris Martin.
Madam Chair, trustees, I'll be extremely brief tonight. I'm excited to report that things are moving along really well for the CTE facility. The foundation has embarked on a feasibility study, there's so much more coming there. But from the CTE update, at this point, we're in the process of going through permitting and working on getting our bid documents ready for early June, and so that's been a focus of our time. I want to thank Trustee Nielsen and Trustee Meyer for looking at some challenging pictures to make some decisions recently on elevations and renderings, and we have some exciting news coming, and they have been a huge help in us getting this project off the ground, and it's going to be incredible.
That's great. Good news. Trustees Nielsen and Meyer, did you want to add anything?
No, I think that the only hurdle that we have right now is with the foundation and some grant opportunities. We had a facilities meeting that took some time and went through that, and how long before we'll be in a position to talk about, you know, what is the amount of money that we are committing to so that we can? I think the desire of the board was to, or the committee was to not step this, don't do one step. And the second step is to be able to find the resources to be able to do this all at one time. Is that true?
That's correct.
So, I think that we're still waiting, and when do you think that that will be?
May 6th and 7th. Tom Monahan from T-Mon Consulting that did the feasibility study on behalf of the foundation will be in town to present to the administration and the board, and we are excited to hear his report.
Okay, fantastic.
Great. Trustee Meyer.
So, to follow up on that, then, we trustees will also be visiting with our consultant, Mr. Monahan.
I believe that is correct, yes.
Right, so that we all will have that updated information, not just.
They will not be in a group format, I think we'll be meeting individually on that.
Very good. Trustee Howard.
Along those same lines, it's my understanding that at least we anticipated, and maybe we already have applied for some kind of an economic development grant from the federal government, is that right?
That is correct.
What's the status of that?
Grant process is ongoing. We anticipate going in, in the month of May, EDA allows us to do a pre-review of our grant application, so we've got that scheduled for the first part of May, with the actual submission being in June.
And what is the turnaround time for a decision generally?
90 days.
And how much are we asking for?
It's an open-ended ask for up to half of the portion of the building that will hold the automotive division, so the $2.5 million or more.
Thank you. Generally speaking.
There's a chance you could put some welding machines in the auto section and just increase that size, though.
We're asking for as much as they will give.
All right, any further questions for Chris? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next informational item is alternative methods for financial aid dispersments. Grayden Stanley.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, President Dunlap and other guests. You might recall from an earlier discussion, the students had expressed a concern about Hire One was maybe the terminology that you heard. Hire One is the current service that we utilize for a net disbursement of funds to students, meaning when they're receiving financial aid or scholarship, we net out all of their expenses on their, on our side that they owe the institution. And then the disbursement of the rest of the money that they're entitled to them goes out through Hire One as our provider. Previous years, back in the day, institutions managed that themselves, and usually that process was writing individual checks to every one of those students. And in the case of 80% of our students receiving aid, it was potentially writing out 5,000 checks. Institutions across the nation went to a service several years ago where they contracted with a provider, we provided lump sum, we provided information, they did the disbursement on our behalf. Most institutions are doing that, the first one in the market was Hire One. Number of institutions went with that service, as did North Idaho College. Hire One from, I think we would tell you, Sarah and Chris and others from our side, working with them have been a good partner. I think students would tell you from their side, they weren't particularly happy with some of the features that it had. That's why I believe it was Richard had mentioned it at a previous meeting, and students have talked about it, they've expressed their concern to me, to Chris Martin and others. In fact, tonight, you may have seen that we had three students in the room, and the reason they came is they saw on the agenda that we were talking about Hire One, and they were coming here to express their dissatisfaction and the hope that we were going to make a change. And in fact, we are, and that's what I want to inform you a bit about that process. Just a little bit more about disbursement as it stands now through Hire One. Students have an option of receiving their money, their net proceeds from financial aid and scholarship in one of three methods. One of those is, in Hire One's case, they provided them with a credit card, if you will, that was sent to them, they had to go through and activate it, and then their net funds were loaded onto that credit card that Hire One was the agency for. They had a choice of taking their net funds and having that sent electronically to their existing bank account. So, if they had a bank account somewhere else, they could have the funds transferred to that existing bank account. Or their third option was they could still ask for a paper check that would be sent to their address. What was in it for Hire One, of course, is establishing a financial relationship with the students. There were fees associated with it as well, and in fact, where Hire One got in a bit of trouble, not only at NIC but across the nation, was the nature of their fees, how expensive that was, they kind of cornered the market. If students used other financial institutions on the Hire One card, there were high fees if they lost their card, there were high fees, so there were a number of issues. Some of that was litigated in fact, and so, colleges have been looking at different options. We've been looking at that then as well for about this past year. Looking at the banks that we currently work with, most of those banks have chosen not to get into that market. It is highly regulated, and so, some of the larger banks have chosen not to be involved in that. But the good news that I'm bringing to you tonight is that in fact, we're working with some local banks, we're accepting proposals, we've been working with them very recently. We anticipate that we'll have a new arrangement on behalf of our students. We anticipate that we'll have a new arrangement on behalf of our students at the earliest fall semester of 2015, at the latest spring semester of 2016. What we particularly like about this, we want to maintain that the ease by which our administration, our financial services can work with that institution, but we want to provide better service for our students without the fees and the other expenses that had been passed along with them. Additionally, we like the fact that it would be a local provider. We certainly want to support our own. Plus, they would have options outside of our campus. They could be at one of those banks in one of the locations and continue transactions with whatever institution that was. So we're working with some of our, our local providers, getting proposals, and we'll be back to report to you who that is. The winner at the end will be our students with better service, less fees, that works well within our institution.
Very good. Thank you. Board, any questions, comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grayden, you're still up. One more item, spring 2015 enrollment.
Thank you. Let me pull, get the right PowerPoint here. And you have this in your package as well. You received a packet, actually, I believe, last month, last month. Trustee Banducci at the last board meeting asked if we'd have a chance to talk about that further, and so that's why I'm here tonight, and would be glad to try to address any of the questions that you may have. I'm going to take you through, just as a reminder, and add maybe a little bit of information to this to, to help with your understanding, but please stop me if you have any, any questions. So the, the first slide, the first information that you had was this total for-credit enrollment, those that are registered for credit. This is not unlike, you recall in the fall that I gave an enrollment report as well. We do this, of course, after, we, we do it, instead of a 10-day report, now we go midway through the semester. That's what these numbers are based on as well. So the spring report is not unlike what the fall report looked like. You can see that the head count on for-credit enrollment was down 5.92%, that the FTE was down 9.58%. Take you to, to the next one. That shows, and this is, this is a bit of a change for us, but, but where we stood previously was a bit unusual for community colleges, is that you can see as we move through 2014 into 15 that our part-time enrollment has become larger than our full-time enrollment. That's not unusual at all for community colleges, and we just crossed over into that just, just this past two years is where part-time enrollment. Academic programs for-credit enrollment, so just dividing it out by sides of campus now. So academic head count was down 5.93%, FTE down 10.6%. Some of the, the credit-taking has been influenced a bit by, we changed, you know, in this process, this last two years, we changed our cost per credit, instead of having that window from 12 to 16 credits where it didn't change, with increased credit-taking behavior. It has decreased a bit of the credit-taking behavior, so that's why our FTE count is a little bit lower than our head count, because students are taking an average of about one credit less. Professional, technical for-credit enrollment, you'll note is 12-point in 2015 for spring semester is 12.61% down in head count, 10.93% down in FTE. Some of, again, the decrease in credits, we have reduced the number of credits that students in CTE programs. Trustee Nielsen, did you see? I just changed my language to CTE. We have decreased the number of credits that they're able to or required to take per semester. That's driven down a little bit of the FTE numbers. Dual-credit enrollment is a happy slide to show you, and, and you heard a bit more about that tonight when you saw the budget presentation by Vice President Martin. For spring semester, we were 1.8% up in head count. We are down about 0.65% in FTE. We anticipate that you're going to see two things in the future, and you saw some of that projection in our budget proposal tonight. That's going to increase quite dramatically. One, because of the, the great work that Cassie and the folks are doing in that department. In working, there's been a lot of work done with faculty and division chairs about the number of offerings that'll be available to students out in the high schools. You know that we changed our model within the last couple of years, where we were at one point about 85% of our dual-credit classes were on our campus, 85% of our dual enrollment, and we flipped that model to what was the original intent of dual-credit for it to be delivered onsite out in the high schools. The one problem we had in that is we had fewer classes available to those students when you go to the high schools, of course, than we had on campus. That's coming around, though, as we're offering more and more. And so I think you'll see fairly dramatic increases in both head count and FTE as those offerings become available. The outreach centers, you have that information as well, and again, fairly consistent, when you had decreasing, for-credit decreasing FTE, and it's pretty much across the board. It's reflected in all these areas. Sandpoint is in the red, Bonner's Ferris, and the blue Silver Valley is in the green. And so again, following pretty much the same patterns as our total enrollment with those decreases. One of the things that, that I know Cassie would want me to point, point out that we're doing now, and we'll have a chance to reflect on those numbers in the future, is this measurement of services and outreach centers is only based on enrollment in classes, and those are much like a mini-campus in that they provide other services. There are a number of students that go into those buildings receiving student services, going in and using the computer labs, utilizing resources there that aren't reflected in credit enrollment. We're tracking that now. And so what you'll see in future reports is number of people just accessing services and the nature of services that they see. And those numbers are substantially more than what are reflected in credit counts. Online is important for you to, to see as well, if you look from 2011 through 2015, again, following that same, that same trend, the online enrollment has decreased at about that same, that same level. In fact, and, and Vice President Burns might be able to reflect on that, there's some rethink in some of those areas where some of, math is one that comes to mind for me. Some of what we've delivered online in the past, we may not be delivering as much online in the future. When we talk about retention and success and completion of our students, some of those, it's less conducive to be doing that online, so you don't necessarily want to have all those options for students. Students don't always know what they don't know, and, and that it's more difficult to be successful in an online class. And so part of that may, may be driven by the course offerings. Want to take you by county. That's certainly of, of interest to you for spring semester, so you can see Cootney County graphically is certainly a lot more. Bonner County next, Shoshone County next, Boundary County, Benowa, and then other Idaho counties represented by the red on the far right-hand side. The next slide is about state of residence to give you some perspective there, and again, it follows a bit of what you saw in the budget presentation tonight. Vice President Martin was talking about that pricing for Washington, and this gives you some sense of why that might be. Certainly, our largest feeder out of state is, is Washington, the blue numbers there. Montana would make sense in, in the red, and then all other states across the nation represented by the, the yellow.
Grayden, does that count the outreach centers' numbers in here?
Yes, it does. All, yes. Sure does. Top feeder high schools, and I want to, I want to note to you, this is, it's easy to assume that this is just based on students who graduated last year and came this year. That's not the case. So when we are looking at GED, for example, is the biggest feeder, if you will, into our programs. That isn't students who just received their GED this last year. It's students who are starting for the first time at North Idaho College and received a GED sometime in their past. And the same thing would be true then if we're looking at Lake City, for example, that 404, that obviously is not 404 graduates of last year's class. We wish it was, but that's 404 students who graduated from Lake City sometime and are starting classes at NIC for the first time for springs, not for spring semester, for this year. Okay? So, so again, I, I don't suspect this would surprise you. We've been looking at in some of our recruitment strategies about market share of students that we receive from various schools. It would make sense to you, and knowing what our mission is, we're focusing on Lake City, on Sandpoint, on Cordelane, on Lakeland, those schools that are in our area, and those are our biggest feeders. And that is, that was, that was the information you had. I wanted to add to that and note about, we've certainly had concerns about enrollment. I think you certainly know that our enrollment is not, it's unfortunate but not unusual. It follows the pattern of the other institutions, not only in this state but across the nation. But I want you to know that we're doing a lot about that. And I, I want to remind you of some of those examples and tell you of a few more. First of all, there's a pretty aggressive admissions and marketing coalition now on our campus that's been working on our, working on our marketing schemes, how to get more people in the front door, if you will. We're, we're looking at that market share and spending more times at those bigger feeder schools. We're going to be at Lake City, at Cordelane, and Postballs, and Lakeland, those places more than we've ever been. We've spent a lot of time, Cassie's been a part of this endeavor as well, developing, refining, improving relationships with all those schools that by mission we're supposed to serve. We've divided much of our market into areas like non-traditional students, which is a big portion of our population, into veteran students, which there's certainly a large population that, that, that needs to and should be served, that we're marketing more aggressively to. You've heard before that we're developing relationships with Spokane College of English Language. We have applications out for programs with the U.S. Department of State to attract more international students here. So we're aggressive about trying to get more people in our front door. You have heard about through the aerospace program, through the increases in dual-credit, through the TAC grant, through the development of a CTE facility, numbers we hear tonight from trustee Nielsen about what's happening at K-Tech and other places would certainly lead us to believe that we're turning this around and the opportunity's there, and, and we'll be there to meet it. Want to share with you, probably you know that even more important than that is keeping the ones that we have and helping them be successful. And you've heard over the course of this last year, presentations about the Village Project that's having extraordinary success through its use of intrusive advising and early alert systems and, and cohorting of helping students stay and be successful. That will improve our retention rates dramatically. You've heard about the Trio Program that has similar kinds of practices. You heard last month from the English Department that presented during the celebration that gave you amazing statistics about the success of our students going through those gateway classes of English. Amazing turnaround in the success of those students. There are initiatives in mathematics. There are other students that we're training. We receive support from the state to, to continue to support intrusive advising. You've heard about ORS, and we've developed ORS 2 now that says to students, the next semester, you can't register until we talk to you again and make sure you're utilizing the services that are available. We have early alert initiatives out there. We have things, Student Development has an initiative along with financial aid about student employment, making sure we employ more of our students through our federal and state work-study programs to work on our campus, because one of the best practices is, of course, that more students retain when they have a deeper relationship with your institution that's not only going to class, but it's also the place that I work and I develop relationships with other employees. So, so please, please know that, that we're not content with these numbers, as you're not content. And they're aggressive strategies to recruit and to retain our students and do better, and we are promising that in our future.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be glad to try to address any other questions you might have.
Good report. All right. Trustee Nielsen.
So you, you mentioned that these are trends nationally. Do you have the statistics or nationally against the last three-year reduction that we've seen nationally, and then maybe talk about South Idaho, and then talk about Spokane, because those are kind of three distinct different, there is, would, would they overlay the same reduction?
They'd look almost identical to it, but you know what I'd love to provide to you is, is just let me put those together. It's easy to get the national ones, and it's easy for us to get the, the regional ones too. And so let me get those. I think what you'll see, trustee Nielsen, is they'll be real close to the same, but I'd love for you to have that information and be able to see that. I'll provide that to you and have it sent to the board.
Follow-up to that?
Certainly.
So when you, if you have that information across through the community colleges there, you, you go in and you look at some pockets where, you know, maybe if you, you took a place in, in Omaha, Nebraska for some reason, and you see head count increases, and you start to see this, and, you know, and then be able to go there and maybe say, what are you doing? And they said, we spend more time on the campuses talking about value and things like that. So is there an opportunity for us to capture individual through some database that would say, what are the colleges that have, let's talk about the colleges that are seeing increases during these deteriorating times, so?
In fact, we just came from a great opportunity, exactly that. Vice President Burns and myself, and our dean of general studies, Larry Briggs, who's here tonight, and Molly Chrysler, and one of our faculty, we're at the AACC Conference, American Association of Community Colleges. The focus of that is retention, recruitment, retention and completion. That's about 90% of it. And all of us attended a series of workshops that were addressing those, and each one of us came away with, most of the people who present there are having great success in some of those areas, and we're tracking those secrets and saying, this is something they've tried, this is something that's working, and we're bringing that back. So in fact, you'll see some more of that implemented.
Trustee Meyer.
You've also, it sounds to me like you've addressed some of the issues I was asking for our next workshop time, is how are we doing in our budgeting to be sure that we're achieving these, these potentially, currently good and potentially even better results.
And, and in fact, Vice President Martin mentioned it tonight, I believe, and, and I don't know if you had a chance to, to zero in on that, but we've had support from the Albertson Foundation to support some of our retention efforts. We in fact have put our money into that same area. Included as a part of this budget is a new category that supports retention and completion initiatives that we fund. It's not a huge amount, but it's probably the first time the institution has directed money exactly at those issues. So, so we have a fund included as part of your budget to further support those activities.
Any other questions? Thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
Good results. Brings us to the board chair report, and it is brief. I just very much want to thank the residents of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Priest River, with our great partnership up here in the far north. I also appreciate the staff that traveled this far and put this great meeting together. It took quite a bit of work, quite a bit of equipment. We love coming into other communities and, and being the faces that you see that are representing North Idaho College. The reception was nice. We appreciate the community members that came out and joined us for that, and I hope everyone has some safe travels home. With that, anything for the good of the order, board? Trustee Meyer.
Just to thank the staff for the calendar that's on our agenda. It looks like there's lots coming up. I hope along the way we'll coordinate the attendance by trustees so we get coverage at all the various events.
Thank you. Trustee Nielsen.
In light of what we're talking about, is there, where, where are we on bringing forth, we're making all these policies and whatever, where we are on the risk policy to get that finalized and prepared for a presentation? Have we, is that in, is that in the works, Joe?
It is, and Laura Hill has departed. She's the one charged with rewriting that policy, and so I, I can't tell you where it is in the process, but I will find out tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anything else? Trustee Banducci.
Just a couple of things. Mentioning the article that was in the Sunday, April 19th paper about NIC and the future of drones. Thought that was a nice article. If anybody saw it, retired U.S. Air Force pilot that's working that. Got a little press there, speaking of space in the future, where drones are going. And that was something I just wanted to point out, in case somebody...
Very nice. Thank you. All right, board, with nothing further, adjourn.